Twelve are present, your honor.
We have a quorum and we will proceed. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation offered by Alder Bill Galvin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, free, just, and equal.
All right, should I start the invocation?
Yes, please, Alder.
Thank you. I want to start out by thanking all our healthcare professionals, city employees, and those that make sure we're able to eat, stay warm, and be safe and secure in our homes for the risks they're putting themselves through and all that they're doing for us. Second, I thought long and hard about the start of my third term, and I remember how it was my first and even my second term, still kind of learning how to go about being a city council person. So at this time, at the start of our new city council session, I want all of us to consider for a few moments the responsibility we have to the interests of all the citizens we were elected to represent. For the next two years, we will face many difficult situations and decisions. We will be tested how to do the most good while mitigating a harm. The decisions we reach will not always be the best for everyone, and we should always keep this in mind. We need to have empathy for those our actions will adversely affect. I ask, we always treat each other with respect, and at the end of every meeting, we leave any adversity at the door. I also ask, we take the time to try and understand where those who have different opinions from ours are coming from, that their opinions are just as valid as ours, and that we all have the same goal, which is to maintain and improve Green Bay as a great place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder, for those words. And now we're on to an exciting one for alders and for the city, the Oath of Office for the new and more seasoned alders. So clerk, please administer the Oath of Office to the 2020, 2022 Green Bay Common Council.
So what I'm going to do is I will read the oath, and then you can repeat after me when I pause for I, then say your name, and then when I say district, say your district, please. So please raise your right hand. Aye.
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 Veronica Corpus Dax.
Bill Galvin.
Chris Weary.
Kathy LaFave.
Being duly elected as alderperson of the City of Green Bay.
Being duly elected as alderperson of the City of Green Bay.
Green Bay.
For district.
For district four.
District six.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of said office.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of said office.
To the best.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
My ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Help me God.
And then if everyone could just turn in their paperwork to me, that would be great, just sign it. I will witness. Thank you.
Thank you, clerk. Congratulations, all. On to the election of our common council president. So we have a few housekeeping items to sort of take care of or agree upon before we move forward with the election. Probably be the easiest to do this with an open ballot, so I will entertain a motion to hold an open ballot for the election of common council.
Motion to hold an open ballot.
So we have a motion made by Alder Scannell.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Stevens. Any discussion on that? All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, nay? The ayes have it. We will have an open ballot here. The other thing to discuss is whether or not we want to have a runoff election, and by that I mean the lowest vote getter in our round of vote counting here would drop off, and then the top two would move on. We don't have to do it that way. That's an option for you as members of council. So I would just kind of open it up to the floor and ask if anybody has an objection to handling it that way, or if you'd prefer to leave everybody on the ballot every round through.
I'd prefer to leave everyone on the ballot, Mr. Mayor, until they choose to drop out.
Okay, thanks, Alder.
Usually do. They usually do.
Any other feelings among alders for that? So we can, under suspension of the rules, which takes two-thirds vote, use a runoff-style election. As I said, it's not necessary, but it is an option.
Well, if Alder Weary wants to... Either one is fine by me. If we got one alder, I'm assuming there are probably a couple others who feel the same way. It's fine by me to keep the alder.
Okay.
Let the alder drop out as they choose to. Who knows? Maybe the bottom getter will end up winning if someone else drops out, or who knows?
Sure, sure. All right. Thanks for those comments there. So with that discussion being dispensed with, I will, at this point, entertain motions to put names into nomination here. Nominate Burnett.
Nominate Dorf.
Okay, do we have seconds for each of those motions? Second.
Second for Dorf.
Okay, so we do have a nomination for Alder Dorf made by Alder Galvin and seconded by Alder Stevens. Also, a nomination for Alder Brunette with a second by Johnson. I'm sorry, so we have a nomination for Alder Brunette. Do we have a second?
Second, Weary.
Seconded by Alder Weary. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Mr. Mayor, it looks like Alder Steyer is trying to speak, but he's on mute. Oh, very good. Thanks, Alder. Alder Steyer?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
So in order to be nominated, you can do it yourself, or do you have to have somebody else do it?
I believe you can make the nomination. Attorney Chavez can correct me if I'm wrong. You do need a second, however. We call a point of order, mayor. Does a nomination, according to Roberts' rules, require a second? My understanding is that it does not. Attorney Chavez, can you clarify?
The second is usually the person accepting the nomination.
But it is not a requirement? Is that correct?
Let me double-check for instances where somebody nominates themselves.
Alder Steyer, if you want to be nominated, I'll nominate you.
Well, I'm just thinking a lot here, so... I'm going to hold off.
Okay, so not a nomination, Alder Steyer?
No.
Okay. All right, so we have two candidates for council president. Since we do have an open ballot, the way that we're going to do this is the clerk is going to roll through all of the council seats, and when you're called upon, you will state who you would like to vote for for council president. And before we get to that, I should ask the candidates, and my apologies here, if they'd like to say anything on their own behalf for their nominations. Alder Dorf?
Thank you. Thank you for the nomination. I do accept the nomination. Most of you know me. You've seen me work over the last two years or over the last four years. And I guess I just want to say maybe three things that are important to me. Fairness and kindness would be the first thing. I believe in being fair, and I believe in looking at all sides of issues. The second thing would be, I'm not afraid to take a stand. I'm not afraid to stand up for what I believe is right and to express my opinions. And I'm also not afraid to compromise if a compromise is what's called for, because there are shades of gray sometimes. Everything's not always black and white. And finally, I'm willing to put in the time. I already put in a lot of the time. I enjoy going to all the different meetings, and if I can't make it, I watch them. I try to be as informed as I possibly can. And if I were to be honored by getting your vote today, I would promise to represent you and represent the city in the best way that I could. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Brunette? Looks like there's an audio issue. Yeah, we're not hearing you on computer audio, Alder. Let me see if you're on.
Yeah.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, you can. Okay, I'm very sorry about that. I had an issue with the phone. I'm going to step out real quick. My audio on my phone was a little messed up, and my computer, and now I had to go by phone. So I apologize for that, and I apologize for not fully listening to Alder Dorf. Thank you for the nomination, and I accept the nomination. I've been on the city council now for four years, and I represented two separate districts. And I have experience chairing a committee on the Brown County Board, and I've been vice president of the city council. I also, like Alder Dorf, do greatly love this city. I've lived here much of my life. I've represented two different city council districts and lived in three different neighborhoods. One thing that I would like to do in the City of Green Bay is to keep our city government nonpartisan. We have a lot of different political perspectives within our city. One thing that I've never done is get endorsed or do any political activities through a political party or special interest groups, and I think this day and age in our city, county, state, and federal governments history, we need people who can look at issues from a very nonpartisan position, and that's the thing that I would do as leader of the city council if you would vote for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. So with those nominations being put forward, I do think the motion to accept both of them and move forward with the election.
Motion to accept the nominations.
Motion made by Alder Galvin.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. And now, as I said, Clerk Teskey will roll through our council here, and when called upon, just state your preference.
Barb Dorf.
Alder Dorf.
Veronica Corpus Dax.
Alder Dorf.
Lynn Gerlach.
Alder Dorf.
Bill Galvin.
Alder Dorf.
Craig Stevens.
Alder Dorf.
Kathy LaFave.
Jesse Burnett.
Randy Scannell.
Alder Dorf.
Chris Weary.
Alderman Burnett.
Brian Johnson.
Alder Burnett.
Mark Steyer.
Jesse Burnett.
John Vanderlees. John Vanderlees.
Yeah, he has a cellphone. Wait, let me... He's undone. He's unmuted.
Not able to hear you, Alder Vanderlees.
Oh, here. Okay. Alder Vanderlees?
Jesse Burnett.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder.
And Jesse Burnett.
Burnett.
So it's a tie, six-six.
So we do have... Everybody is necessary, so we will need to revote.
Barb Dorf.
Alder Dorf.
Veronica Corpus Dax.
Alder Dorf.
Lynn Gerlach.
Alder Dorf.
Bill Galvin.
Alder Dorf.
Craig Stevens.
Alder Dorf.
Kathy LaFave.
Alder Burnett.
Randy Scannell.
Alder Dorf.
Christopher Weary.
Alderman Burnett.
Brian Johnson.
Alder Burnett.
Mark Steyer.
Alder Burnett.
John Vanderlees.
Jesse Burnett.
And Jesse Burnett.
Burnett.
It's still a tie.
Well, as I said, we do need a majority here. So I don't know if there are thoughts to be shared. But otherwise, we'll just continue to vote.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know how to raise my hand to speak. Can I speak?
Yes, Alder Gerlach.
I have been doing a little reading about how city governments work, because I'm a newcomer, and it was my understanding that in the case of a tie, that the mayor votes.
Yes, that is my prerogative, and that's the advice that I am able to vote. Of course, I know that when, in the normal course of events, we have tie votes at council. That is something that I'm able to do, is break a tie. I do feel that this is a decision of council, and while I'm sort of a quasi-member of the body, I'd be most comfortable with council making this decision. Of course, I'm not interested in being here all night either. So we will continue to roll through a few more times, but I don't think it's in the interest of the city to have a deadlock or, you know, a council without a president. So that's something that I could reconsider at some point.
Mr. Mayor, if I could...
Alder Weary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that's a wise choice. You know, I've been through, I don't know, eight, nine of these by now, and I know when I became council president, I think we went through 12 or 15 votes between myself and Alderman Dwayne. It works itself out, and I think I appreciate your staying out of it, because this is our leadership. This is the council's leadership, and we need to work it out, however that might be. So let it run its course, no matter how long it takes. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Vanderlees, did you have something to say?
Yes. If it would be okay with the council approval, how about a coin toss?
That is, you know, I believe that is, that kind of a tie break is acceptable, but it would have to be approved by majority of council.
I make a motion to use a coin toss.
It would actually require a two-thirds vote to suspend the rule.
Attorney Chavez?
It would actually require a two-thirds vote to suspend the rule.
Very good. Alder Vanderlees, did you have a motion?
Yes, I have a motion. We use a coin toss to determine who will be the council president. If the council agrees with a two-thirds majority, I say let's toss the coin. Thank you. I need a second on that.
Thanks, Alder. Is there a second?
I'll second that. I don't think this position is... It's a significant position, but I think any one of us here is qualified to do it. I think both candidates are qualified to do it. I do have a little bit of an umbrage in that, I believe, from the little bit I'm getting into that old pattern of us and them and partisan bull crap. There is no partisanship here on the council. And to bring that up, it just makes me suspicious. I don't... I remember when I first started, there was very much a strong feeling of us against them and got to have somebody in there who can oppose the mayor. It was two different camps. And I've always thought of us all as one, all together. And there is nothing about this job that is partisan or that requires anybody... Point of order, are we speaking to a coin flip, Mr. Mayor? I'm making the second. I believe that gives me the... I think you're blathering on about non-related items, Randy.
Alder Weary, Alder Scannell has the floor.
Well, you've made it an out-of-order. You can do that. I'm done, anyway.
Very good. So we have a motion and a second. As Attorney Chavez stated, this requires a two-thirds vote. So we will...
I have my button pressed, Mr. Mayor.
Apologies, Alder Weary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just remind everybody, we're on our second vote. Like I said before, I think when I became president, we went through 15 votes. We're on number two. I think we're getting way ahead of ourselves. If anything, we moved to a closed ballot. That allows people maybe to vote differently than they would, and we can elect our leader of our council. I don't want to leave this up to random, so thanks.
Thanks, Alder Weary. Further comments on the motion that's on the floor? Again, this requires two-thirds vote, so we will use the board.
Okay, just, Mayor, just give me one second, okay? And then I'll just play the vote.
While she's preparing.
I'm sorry?
Um, I just, I would like to... Can I state... There's... Okay.
Yeah, there's a roll call ongoing.
Okay.
Just give us one more moment, please. The vote is three to nine. Three in favor and nine against.
The motion fails nine-three, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Mayor, can you see that?
I cannot see the vote.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay, motion fails. Are there comments? Otherwise, we'll go to the vote again.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, who voted for it, since we can't see the vote?
Just give me one moment. So Vanderlees, Alders Vanderlees, Burnett, and Scannell, Scannell, excuse me.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
Alders Vanderlees, Scannell, and Burnett voted in favor.
Okay, so we will go to the vote again. Clerk Teskey? You're on mute. Start again, Alder. Clerk Teskey, please.
Barb Dorf.
Alder Dorf.
Veronica Corpus Dax.
Alder Dorf.
Lynn Gerlach.
Alder Dorf.
Bill Galvin.
Alder Dorf.
Craig Stevens.
Alder Dorf.
Kathy LaFave.
Alder Burnett.
Randy Scannell.
Alder Dorf.
Christopher Weary.
Alderman Burnett.
Brian Johnson.
Alder Burnett.
Mark Steyer.
Alder Burnett.
John Vanderlees.
Alder Burnett.
And Jesse Burnett.
Burnett.
And it's still a tie.
Suspend the rules and conduct a closed ballot?
Motion to suspend the rules.
I believe that's... Attorney Chavez could chime in. I believe that's just a simple majority? Or do we need to...
That is correct. That is not actually suspending the rule, but just going back to it. So that's just a simple majority.
So a motion to go to a closed ballot?
A motion has been made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Scannell. Is that right?
Sure.
To move to a closed ballot. So the way that this is going to have to be conducted is through email. So if you could please email Clerk Teskey your votes for council president.
Mayor, I don't know if I can do that. I think I can minimize this.
Mayor, I believe we actually have to vote on the motion first.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yep, very good. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, so we will use the closed ballot. Thanks, Alder. So again, just use your email to send that vote over to Clerk Teskey.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Does that mean that I have to use the city email, which I've never logged on to?
No, whatever email is at your disposal, just make sure it gets to Chris Teskey at her official email.
Okay. And can you give me that email again?
It's C... I'm sorry, K-R-I-S is in Sam.
I'm sorry, can I hear you?
Yes. This is Celestine. K-R-I-S is in Sam, T is in Tom, E at greenbaywi.gov.
Okay, I think I missed one. K is in Kathy, R is in Robert, I, S is in Sam, T is in Tom. What was the next one?
E is an elephant?
E.
Yes.
Is an Edward. Okay.
Yes.
Let's see if I can get this. Okay.
And we will just sort of stand informal until those votes are available to Clerk Teskey.
I am waiting for District Six and District Eleven.
Yeah, I'm having trouble just a minute.
Chris, you have that email now?
District Eleven, I did receive your email.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, I did, and it's still a tie.
Do we have to vote again?
Another, another round of secret balloting here.
And it's still a tie.
Any comments from Alders?
Mayor, I'd like to introduce the coin toss again. Make a motion, introduce the coin toss. I think we're gonna be here quite a while otherwise. Your motion lost, you can't reintroduce it. Okay, somebody else have to do it.
Alder Weary, could you talk about how you broke your tie some years back?
Alder Weary?
Oh, well, like I said, I think we went 12 rounds at least, then we took a, we took a 10-minute timeout, and we came back, and it was decided. That's a little tougher here, of course, but.
A little tougher, yeah.
All right, we'll have another round of secret balloting. Like I said, my preference is to not be here all night, however. We have some business to attend to. And it is, as Attorney Chavez said, as Alder Gerlach has stated, it's prerogative of the mayor to break a tie. So I would, I would urge you to break the tie on your own. And we will have another round. Mayor, just a point of information. Alder, Alder Weary alluded to the fact that Alder Vanderlees was unable to reintroduce that motion. Can another Alder reintroduce that motion?
It would be a motion to reconsider, somebody who was on the deciding side of it.
Okay, so, so I was on the deciding side of that, so I would, I would move that we
I'll second that. I'll second that, if it's, if it's appropriate being that I'm one on the ballot.
I'm sorry about that, I was muted. And my question was if the second also needed to be from the prevailing side. Attorney Chavez?
I have to double check here, but my recollection is that it would be fine.
So I voted no to the coin toss the first time, and I should say I voted yes to the coin toss the first time. And that was a, I lost that motion, and so I would be comfortable seconding based on this. And if, Mayor, if you're, if you're okay, I'd like to just make a few comments to that.
But.
Yeah, so.
Well, you were, well, just one second, Alder Burnett. I think Attorney Chavez is checking on the procedural question. Very good. So we have a motion from Alder Johnson, a second originally, I think by Alder Vanderlees, to use a coin flip to determine the outcome here. As you all know, it requires suspension of the rules, so it's two-thirds vote. So we will again use the board. But prior to getting to that, Alder Burnett, did you have comments?
Yeah, I, I am in favor of the coin toss, it just seems like a non, you know, partial way for this to be decided. Both Alder Dorf and I are qualified, as are all other 10 members of the council. I just think, leave it to chance and move forward from there. So I'm in, I'm in support of a coin toss. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Dorf?
Um, I'm not in support of a coin toss. I think we still can work this out. I, I wouldn't want to lose by a coin toss, I wouldn't want to win by a coin toss. I would just ask the Alders to, to keep trying. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Further comments on that motion? Otherwise, we will use the board.
I have to log back in.
Did, did the board come up? Uh, not yet.
Okay, good.
Oh, you got the board, did you want to display? Oh, Ald, Alder Lefave, right? Alder Lefave, can you please vote?
Not up.
And Alders Weary?
It's not up. It's not up for me either, for Alder Dorf.
So is anyone having, so Alder Dorf, Alder Lefave, you're having difficulty, you can't get in?
No. I'm in, I'm in civic clerk, but there's nothing to vote.
I'm in, I'm in as well, in board view, but there's nothing. Can I vote verbally?
Yes. Yes? Mayor?
Yep, Alder Dorf votes no. Alder Lefave?
Um, no.
Alder Lefave votes no.
So that is five, yes, and seven, no. Would you like a roll call of that?
Alders, do you need to know who voted? Alder Weary, looks like he requests a roll call there.
Yes, okay. All right, so Alders Dorf, Galvin, Stevens, Scannell, Corpus Dax, Lefave, and Gerlach voted no. Alders Johnson, Weary, Burnett, Vanderlees, and Steyer voted yes.
Okay, so that motion fails? Any further comments on our nominations? All right, we will proceed to another round of secret balloting.
And we still have a tie.
Thank you, Clerk. Alder Gerlach?
Am I muted?
Uh, you're unmuted now. Oh, now you're muted again. Go ahead. Go ahead, yes, go ahead, Alder.
This is a point of order, and I truly do not know the answer. Is it possible to go, there was another Alder who was interested in being nominated. Is it possible to go back? Is it possible to start over and nominate that third person? It might be, make all the difference.
Attorney Chavez, assistance there?
Um, I would say no, since we have an election underway.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, this is Alder Lefave.
Yeah, Alder.
I think it's time, I will vote this time. I would like to make a motion that we have a coin toss. I think this is gonna go on for quite a while. And I voted no, an affirmative, or no, you know, the majority. I'd like to change.
Okay. Alder Lefave makes a motion, Alder Lefave makes a motion for a coin toss. Is there a second?
Second, Steyer.
Seconded by Alder. There still requires suspension of the rules, so we're gonna use the board.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Alder Weary, go ahead.
Thank you. Before I vote, a quick Google search did find that you can make a motion to reopen the nominations. Uber's rules of order, so I just want that, you know, I'd be glad if the attorney wants to back that up with something, but I think it is available, to extent of my knowledge and from a quick search online, it is available, so.
Thanks, Alder. And apologies, we do have a roll call ongoing, so we're gonna have to wait for that to be concluded.
No, that's fine, I'd just like correct information available.
Uh, Mayor, it's not coming up for mine. I think it's because I have to re, re-join each time I go into my email and I come back. I don't know if that's causing.
Alder Lefave, how would you like to vote?
Uh, I will vote yes, that we do the coin toss.
Alder Lefave, open up a, a second tab. You don't have to keep bouncing back and forth. Do a tab for email and a tab for civic clerk.
Okay, so.
You're talking to someone who doesn't.
All there's.
I'm not.
Alder, just one second. Ms. Jeffries?
Thank you, Mayor. So we have eight to four. Eight in favor, four against. Would you like a roll call? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Alders Dorf, Galvin, Stevens, and Scannell voted against. And Alders Johnson, Weary, Burnett, Vanderlees, Steyer, Corpus Dax, Lefave, and Gerlach voted in favor.
All right, I'm not sure exactly how one administers a coin toss.
Uh, I believe we have our IT director who is available to videotape the coin toss. Alder, I'm sorry. Attorney Chavez, do you have any suggestions?
Nope, you can just toss a coin. How do you pick a side?
Right, it's the choosing of the sides that I suppose.
Yes.
I'm unsure of.
Turn on your video. I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
I said it's the choosing of the sides I'm unsure of how to administer. So if.
Alder Burnett can certainly choose first.
Okay, very good.
Heads and tails. Heads and tails.
That's exactly what I'm going to choose to.
You, you said, I'll, I'll pick heads.
I'll pick tails.
We do have the video here. We do have the video here.
Looks like.
Appears to be a heads. Is that correct? Appears to be a heads to me.
Congratulations, Alder Burnett.
Yes, congratulations, Alder Burnett.
Thank you. Was that a, did he toss it?
So sorry, Mayor, excuse me, sorry.
Or was it like a Super Bowl where he was showing both sides?
We haven't tossed the coin yet, we were just showing the integrity of the coin.
Oh, for God's sake.
Oh, that wasn't the toss?
That wasn't the toss.
I accept, thank you. I accept, thank you.
Okay, so, excuse me, so sorry. We were just showing the integrity of the American 25 cent piece.
Very good.
Here's the coin toss.
Okay, here we are. Carpet?
Uh, not seen it.
It's carpet.
Nope.
And it is heads, yes?
Yes, it is heads, Mayor.
Yes, congratulations, Alder Burnett.
Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone.
Congratulations again, Alder Burnett, this time for real.
Thank you.
Now we're on to item G, election of common council vice president. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to nominate Alder Galvin.
Second.
Motion made to nominate Alder Galvin made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf.
I would like to make a motion, I'm sorry, I would like to make a motion to nominate Alder Dorf.
Is there a?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Gerlach. Is that something you would accept, Alder Dorf?
I'm thinking. Is it all right with the Alder that's been nominated already?
Alder Galvin, you care to make some comments? Oh, you're still muted here.
You're muted.
Alder?
Let's, I guess let's wait and see who else is nominated, if there's any more people are nominated, and then I'll, I'll make a comment then.
Very good, Alder. Any other nominations?
Are the nominations closed?
Yes, seeing no other nominations, Alder Galvin, you have the floor.
All right, then I would be fine with not accepting the nomination.
Thank you, Alder. So we have one candidate that's been submitted. I'll entertain a motion to accept the nominations.
Motion accept. Slow move.
Motion made by Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Steyer. All of you can signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay. You guys have it, and we have the nomination of Alder Dorf for vice president.
Approved by acclamation.
Second.
Motion's been made by Alder Johnson to approve by acclamation, seconded by Alder Gerlach. All in, if we have any dissension, please make your position known. Hearing none, congratulations, Alder Dorf, Madam Vice President.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, now we're on to approval of the minutes.
Slow move.
Move to approve, second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf to approve the minutes of the April 1st and April 9th, 2020 meetings. Any corrections that need to be made? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay, the ayes have it, the minutes have been approved. On to approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder LaFave, any changes to make? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay, the agenda before you has been approved. Onto the report by the mayor. So just a few things for you tonight. Unfortunately, again, COVID related, it's the new reality that, that we're dealing with here. And unfortunately, our reality is getting a bit worse in Brown County, as I'm sure you're all aware. Cases have been increasing fairly significantly in recent days. Many of them associated with a few clusters. JBS packing probably being the biggest source of new cases, according to our Brown County Public Health. So the CDC is in town to assist our county public health folks. And there's really no way to sugarcoat when the CDC comes to town. That's not good news. But we are hopeful that the CDC will be able to, to offer our county public health department some guidance as, as they work through this difficult time for, for the employees and the families who've been affected. I just want to make it clear to the residents of the city. There's not a neighborhood, or a zip code, or a type of person, or a type of employee that needs to be avoided during these times. Unfortunately, we all need to keep a distance from, from all of our residents. And anyone who's outside of your household needs to be kept at a safe social distance. I just wanted to make the point that, as many of you know, as Alders know, as many community members know, but just to reinforce the point that our Brown County Public Health is the lead agency that's, that's leading the response here in Brown County. Our emergency manager is Chief Litten. He and his command staff work very closely with our EOC and the county's EOC, and the lead agency being Public Health. But the county is the one who's, who's driving the bus here, and all of us are here to assist them. However, we do have a really important role to play as a city, as mayor, and as council members, to do whatever we can to assist our community members and to strengthen, in whatever way, the community and the economy that we have here in Greater Green Bay. We have taken some steps, you as council, our administration has taken some steps to offer, you know, liquor license relief to bars and restaurants, to make some regulatory changes to allow for, for bars to offer certain products. We've seen the, the program, a new program come online, thanks to the revolving loan fund committee and, and our staff here at the City of Green Bay, which has established a COVID relief loan program for businesses located in the city that have been impacted by the coronavirus. But I'm just gonna, you know, I'm gonna call on you all again, as I have in the past, to please keep your eyes open, your ears open. If you are seeing things that, that you think the city administration should be aware of, if you're seeing different communities who are assisting their businesses and community members in a way that you think might be possible here, obviously want to, want to be pointed in that direction. This is a very difficult time, it goes without saying. And it's incumbent upon us to do whatever we can to pull together as, as council, as, as mayor, and assist our community members and, and make sure that, that we all get through this, this period. As I said, after the swearing in, congratulations to all of our Alders. Want to say it again, though, this is a really important role that you all have. I know that, that you know that, but just wanted to echo it and reinforce the importance of having a well-functioning, respectful body here at city council as the legislative body in the City of Green Bay, and so congratulate you again here on your victories, and congratulate you on, on your swearing in here tonight. Finally, I just want to take a moment, maybe a point of personal privilege, to wish a happy birthday to my son, Henry, who is 10 years old today, which is pretty hard to believe. But he is, he's a real blessing to me and my wife and the whole family, so happy birthday, Henry.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Congratulations.
Happy birthday, Henry.
Thanks, Alders.
You don't want us to sing, believe me. Mr. Mayor, do you have a question, if I could?
That, that does conclude my report.
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Alder Weary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering, because I don't see your report, and you did a good job of bringing us up to date on the COVID. Could we ending item per? I'm gonna read the public actions, when I ask you during your report, but there's nowhere else to talk about.
Alder Weary, Alder Weary, just one second, you were cutting out there.
You couldn't read my moving hands? I was wondering if ending item here for Chief Litten to report on, on what's going on. Because if we have questions as a council, or someone in the community would, we really shouldn't be asking you under your report by the mayor.
Right, that's fair. No, Alder, you know, we do have an item under committee the whole where Chief Litten, as our emergency manager, could have an opportunity to weigh in and, and could answer some questions there.
Then I'll keep mine for later, thank you.
Very good, thanks, Alder. As I said, that concludes my report, and we're now on to a presentation that Clerk Teske will provide regarding the April 7 elections.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to say, please be patient with me. Everything that I am about to say has to do with things that I've heard, so I'm trying to answer questions that I, you know, comments that I've seen in the media, or whatever, so please bear with me, it's kind of long, but I just feel I need to say this. So I want to say I'm sorry to anyone who didn't receive an absentee ballot. The clerk's office felt horrible, and I will get into that later on with the court order. We did everything that we could to get ballots out. We had, we were trying to get that done. We had to update the poll worker roster, respond to polling locations, polling out. Our liquor license renewals are due now, licensing and campaign finance reporting. We received help with the daily receiving phone calls, state reports that needed to be filed, committee and council agenda minutes and meetings, and we were very well supported by all departments, including police, fire, and transit. So we can't thank city staff enough for all the help that you gave us. So now some background information, things that I saw, you know, as far as the, the election being mismanaged. I would like to talk about that comment. That was brought for us by Sandy Juno, who has no idea how to run a polling location, because that's not in her job description. The Brown County Clerk's Office programs the election, prints ballots, and uploads the results to their website on election night. I feel she's trying to deflect the issue that some of the people who requested ballots did not get them. But everyone in line at the polls voted, did get to vote. Unfortunately, the lines were long, and I think that had to do with not everyone getting an absentee ballot, and I'm sorry for that. One Alder person brought up the fact, why didn't we ask Brown County for help? We did. The mayor told me to call the Brown County Clerk's Office to see if they could give us any help, because they are certified in the system to work in WISVOT, which feeds to my vote, is run by the Wisconsin Elections Commission. It is not the City of Green Bay. So we, I called over there to see if they could give us any help, because one of their employees over there was capable of helping us, because she had in the past. So keep in mind that at this point, all the programming and the ballots were printed, which Brown County does, but that was in their print department. And I was told by the chief of staff that they could not, chief deputy, I apologize, could not help us. I asked about two of their employees, one who filled in at our office before, and I was told, no, they haven't worked in the system much. And the other one, the other person was homesick. So then on Tuesday, March 31st, the county clerk sends over a person, which is the one that used to help us, which was fantastic. That same week, the mayor decided to go down to two polling locations because of the shortage of poll workers. Keep in mind, at this point, we did not know the National Guard would be deployed and trained. When Sandy heard the mayor was going down to two polling locations, she came over to Green Bay Clerk's Office, brought her chief deputy and deputy along with her, and she said, you're only having two tabulators at the polls, and I said, yes. She said, well, what happens if it breaks down? And I said, I'll have a spare there. And also, if a machine jams or breaks down, there is a slot to open, so the voter can put in their ballot securely. I said, on the normal election, there isn't a backup tabulator at each polling location, and there isn't an election text stationed at the polling site like I was having on April 7. Usually, election texts are dispatched if there's an issue. During a normal election, we have five tabulators for central count, which is held in the clerk's office and remaining at the polling locations. This election, we have four at the polling locations and the remaining for central count, because the volume of absentees were so high. When she left, she didn't seem upset, she said she would be sending another one or two people over to help, and I thanked her. She did send one person over, and that person was sick. So I didn't want her in the office with the coronavirus, I didn't know, so I sent her back. And then Celeste, the chief of staff, talked to Sandy, and Sandy said, well, we could have people work in our office. When I told Sandy that she would need Dymo printers, they don't have any there, and Sandy wouldn't buy one. Well, Celeste realized she had one at her desk, and then I had one at one of the staff's desks in our clerk's office, so we sent those over there. These are only the size of a Kleenex box, so they can just be carried over. They took the printers, and when they, they came back later in the afternoon, and they said, we couldn't do anything, our IT person didn't come and connect them. So they didn't, couldn't help at all over there. Let's see. Monday morning, I called her, the girl that was helping us when she left on Friday. She said, call me Monday if, if you need me, and I said, well, I'll need you, but I'll call you Monday. I called her, and she told me she couldn't help on Monday, which was the day before the election, because per the, per the law at the time, we could still get absentees out. I was told she couldn't help, because she had to send out the National Guard. So then, let's see. On Sunday, March 29th, I sent an email to the Wisconsin, Wisconsin Elections Commission, asking for guidance on having city employees being able to access the system, and I never received a response back from them. That day that Sandy came over, she went right back, she called the WEC, and she was told that they needed to be trained with my assistance, and then they could get a username and password. But Sandy said to me, you don't have to train them, just say they were trained. And I, I said, I'm not gonna do that, because we do sign paperwork that we took the training and that, what they're working with is confidential information. So now I'm gonna get to the absentee process. I had called and left a message for the postmaster on March 12th, to call me concerning the ballots, absentee ballots. I asked if the absentee ballots could be kept in Green Bay the Friday before the election and not sent to Milwaukee or the Twin Cities to be sorted, and I never received a back. I thought at that time that it would help to keep the ballots here, to get them to the voters sooner. The clerk, and so then the process now of absentee requests. But myself and the deputy clerk are the only ones that get notified of absentee requests. So that's through our email. We also get notified by an email set up for our office, which is absentee requests. And then under Clerk's inquiries, we also get them there, and I also get them on my own email. So when I quoted our request of 17,000 emails, now that's in a two and a half to three week period. 17,000 emails coming in. It was just so overwhelming. And the deputy clerk was printing them out, printing them out, and she just couldn't keep up. So I asked IT then if, well, I did ask the WEC, could we be doing this any way quicker? I said, nope, what you're doing is the best way possible. So then we asked IT if they could help us. We did. They came up with a program that made it print faster. There's a few glitches in it, but I truly believe that that made things go faster to print out. The only issue there was when I saw that we were just drowning, I said, Kimmy, I'm printing, print them. So Erica Downen Printing printed them, and she said, that first day, she said to Kim, the deputy clerk, she said, I did work all day. I just can't believe that they're coming in faster than I can print them out. So and what we had to do in that case also is we couldn't have them directed to Erica. The deputy clerk had to get her email over to the print department, because all those emails coming in were starting to clog up the servers, because photo ID was attached to most of them. When it comes to absentee ballots, in the beginning of an election, we are given deadlines when the first batch has to be sent out. So that first batch went out on March 17th, and it was over 2,000. It did include nursing homes, because we could not send special voting deputies to the nursing homes. So that is a quicker process. The requests are in there already, so right now, people are also asking for absentees for August and November, which is fantastic, because if we can get them in that first batch, it goes quicker than doing them individually. When I did ask the WEC then on Saturday, March 28th, if they came up with anything faster, I did get a response and was told they did come up with a new report. And then I had another email explaining the report, and then another person from the WEC said, last I asked about sharing this, I was told to hold off, because it may not have been working completely correctly. So we didn't go that route, because we didn't know if we were going to get every single request, because that would be huge if we missed one there. Once the labels are printed, which I did send you the screenshots of how to do that, and that is just for one person. So just to get a set of labels out for one person, it takes 18 clicks. That does not include putting the labels on the envelope or inserting the ballot and the instructions. So once the labels are printed, they're put on an envelope, the inside and outside envelope, next the correct ballot that has the correct ward number selected, folded, and inserted into the envelope with directions. We had many devoted city staff that came in day after day and helped us label and insert ballots, so the city clerk's office, who were certified in the system, would be able to continue on with labeling. The WEC system allows voters to request as many times as they want. We had one person request 11 times. 11 times, we still have to print and touch that to make sure it's in there. Nothing tells us, oh, this person did that already. So there's multiple requests. Some also sent their request to every email that we have. So with the size of Green Bay, there's no way that we could know who was asking multiple times. We also have mail-in requests, so anyone that wants to send us a letter, they can mail it to us. And what I did, and I'm not a fan of canned responses for email, but I had to. I had a canned reply to emails, which I hated doing, but I had to either answer emails or get as many absentee requests out as possible. If someone asked where their absentee request was, I would do a search to see if I had one, but didn't respond, because I had the canned response asking for their patience. If I did see that there was an issue, then I would answer back saying, I don't see it. Some voters requested absentee ballots by city email, and they didn't provide photo ID. So my canned response answered that, and some didn't send anything back, so I couldn't process their request. The clerk's office staff couldn't answer the phones anymore, because we had over 200 phone calls coming in on one day. So here we have all the emails coming in and then all the phone calls. So we received help from other departments answering phones. A couple of people argued with me that they didn't have to provide photo ID, because Governor Evers said they only needed to provide name and address. So there's a lot of information out there, and some of it wasn't ice correct. So I just want to say I'm so proud of the staff in the clerk's office. They worked so hard to try and get a ballot to everyone. We had in-person absentee voting for 12 days at the transit station from 10 till 2, but the Thursday and Friday before the election, it was 10 to 5. I am so thankful that Director Hughes allowed us in the dispatch area, so the girls could be behind glass. And one voter actually sat up and coughed all over the glass. So it was just good that they had that glass in between. Last day, and this is just kind of a little side note, that I want to tell you how devoted the girls are in the office. One of the girls fell the last day of in-person voting. She ended up in urgent care. Urgent care couldn't help her. She had to go to the emergency room. Her tendon was showing on her finger. She had nine stitches. She said to the doctor, please stitch my finger so that I can type labels this weekend, so I can get these out. I can help get absentee ballots out to the people. She was that devoted. So her finger wasn't straight. It was crooked, so she could type. Some of the girls in the beginning couldn't work at night. We didn't, there wasn't any extra laptops. As soon as IT got laptops in, they set them up, and they took work home too for nights and weekends. Then when absentee ballots are returned, so as we're trying to get all these out, then we're getting them all back in, people were wondering, why isn't my ballot marked back in? Well, we didn't have time for that. Again, you have to be certified in the system to be able to do that. So when ballots are returned, they're logged in, which is a very quick process. Then they have to be put in ward order, in alphabetical order, and then opened. Then two people, like at the polls on Election Day, take the ballot log, which is like a poll book. They state the person's name and address on the envelope. The workers give the person a number in the ballot log, and then the ballot is fed into the tabulator. At the end, the last number on the ballot log should match the number on the tabulator. This is done for each individual envelope. And we had almost 12,000 returned. As far as poll workers. Alder Weary, you asked to be a poll worker, and I stated you were on the ballot, so you couldn't, but I was thankful you asked. Finally, I was told that I could assign you at East High to help with disinfecting. The night before the election, you emailed me on my work computer at 8:24 PM to tell me you won't be in until 2:30 on Election Day. And that you're sending someone else, which was very nice. You tried to cover, but if you would have been a poll worker, that would have been very upsetting to a chief inspector.
If I were a poll worker, I would have been there all day. And as we found out from the state.
Because they are the ones that are in charge on Election Day.
Listen, when there's something incorrect, I need to.
Alder, you're out of order.
I just, point of order then. Point of order. The state did come back and say, we can be poll workers as long as it's not in our own district. So that that just needs to be corrected. We can be. I have that right from the Wisconsin Elections Commission. So if you want to see that, you can.
Okay, Clerk.
Attorney Chavez.
Clerk Teskey has the floor. Clerk Teskey, proceed.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Did Attorney Chavez want to speak on that?
Sure. I reached out to the WEC, because we had received conflicting information. They said that it is common for people to receive conflicting information depending on who asks at the WEC. They stated that they will be providing additional guidance in the future, but that their recommendation is still to allow Alders, or I shouldn't say Alders, anybody who's currently on a ballot can work an election, just not an election that they're in.
So any other district?
No.
I think you're incorrect. I think we need to get information on that.
As Attorney Chavez stated, there's some mixed messages, so Clerk Teskey, proceed.
Thank you. So the chief inspectors are the ones that are in charge on Election Day at their polling location. Fortunately, I knew the person that was replacing you and was okay with it. But just to note that on a normal election, there are laws as to who can be at the polls, and they have to be from the county that that they're working in.
Thank God he was there.
The clerk's office has the interest of all citizens in mind, just as much as you do. Our job is to make sure everyone has equal access to the ballot, and this time, we were forced by the court to stop filling absentee requests, which we feel so sorry about that. I also heard it was being said that we didn't have any backup at the polls for poll workers. There were backups. And when the chief inspectors realized that they needed more tables opened, that is when the backups were used. This happens all the time. People don't realize how dedicated these workers are. They normally eat meals as they are working, but I told them this time, they shouldn't eat at the table because of the coronavirus. Polling locations, the city of Green Bay doesn't have community centers like other municipalities, so we are not able to make spur-of-the-moment changes. Polling locations need to be ADA compliant. Our biggest polling location is UWGB, and we weren't allowed to use their facility this time. Some polling locations we have are in small rooms and are ADA compliant on a normal election, but when there is six, the social distancing is six feet apart, we couldn't use some of those rooms. Some polling locations are interior rooms where voters have to use the same door to go in and out in hallway. So again, social distancing would be a problem. The high school gyms had outside doors that could be open, and people come in one door and go out the other. The WEC knew a week ahead of time that this is what we were doing. The city of Green Bay also always has curbside voting. I told the chief inspectors to brush up on the rules, because I thought we would have more this time. In the 15 years that I have worked on elections, eight as clerk, we have never had people call for an appointment for curbside voting. Our process is always been, have someone come along, and they can stand in line for you, and when they get to the front of the line, you can say they have someone who needs to vote in the car, and two poll workers will go out. It's unfortunate that Sandy Juno didn't ask ahead of time if it was our process. Instead, she caused more confusion. As soon as I heard there might be an issue with curbside voting, I contacted the chief of staff, who coordinated staff at the door, and she went right over to clarify what our process was. One woman got out of her car to talk to the chief inspector, and said she wanted to curbside vote, because she thought she could go to the front of the line. We told her that we would get her a chair, and when it was her turn to vote, she could walk up to the poll books. She wasn't happy about that. I did receive emails asking about curbside voting on Election Day. As soon as I saw them, I called the person to explain the process. They stated they were alone. I set a time for them to go, and the poll workers would be out there to assist, and this voter was very happy. Another one called holding the process, and he just argued with me that I was disenfranchising him when I was asking him what time he wanted to make an appointment, and he hung up on me. So some, and some wouldn't even respond to my emails. Curbside voting is defined as a voter who cannot enter the absentee voting location or polling place due to a disability. One of the big confusions at this election, we have drive-up voting, which we don't. We didn't have drive-up voting. Then when the mayor decided to have two polling locations, it became obvious that we would have enough qualified, experienced poll workers. I didn't have time to train anybody new. It was either keep printing labels to get absentee ballot requests out or train people. We didn't know at the time the National Guard was going to be trained. And I have an email here, and this is what I was afraid of, and this came, this went to Sandy Juno from the Wisconsin Elections Commission, and says, good morning. And this was, I just want to say, Monday, April 6th, at 9:36 in the morning. And the WEC said the deployment came together very quickly, so we know there had been some mix-ups. For example, some guard people showed up very early this morning, and it seems some missed the training yesterday. Also, some counties have too many and some not enough. When I came to work that morning of the election, there was a girl outside waiting, and she was from the National Guard, and I said, you were assigned to the city of Green Bay, and she said, yes. So I thanked her, and I sent her over to West High School, where she worked and did a great job. So I didn't turn anyone away, but I was afraid that they would not be trained properly. Because even though some people think you can just plop a person in the chair in front of a poll book, it's not that easy. If you go out to the website, which I will give you later for training for poll workers, just have a person sit at the poll book is a 10-page training manual. 10 pages. You know, everything can look good on paper until it doesn't work out that way. And that's usually what happens. The WEC, I think they are just understaffed also, because when we ask for things to be corrected or updated, they'll say in a couple of weeks. One of them that was huge to us took a year and a half. So even though I appreciate them trying to get the National Guard out, I was hesitant about that. And I've had other clerks in Brown County tell me the same thing. They had the same concerns. So and then in response to people accusing the mayor of wasting his time on a lawsuit, he did that, because we could see the train wreck coming, that people would not, not every person would be able to get the ballot. Telling him, we have this many in the queue. We have this many to do, and it kept getting bigger and bigger. And as that was happening, the poll workers were pulling out, polling locations were pulling out. And he didn't ask for it to be canceled. He just asked for it to be extended. He wanted to make sure everyone could vote. The mayor also wanted to make sure poll workers and citizens were protected from the coronavirus as much as possible, but he wanted to limit the number exposed. I believe if voters had gotten their absentee ballot in the mail, which was denied by the court, they wouldn't have been standing in line, which would have reduced the number at the polls. We can usually tell by people in person voting the two and a half weeks or two weeks ahead. We can usually tell how busy an election day is going to be. So the other thing I wanted to say as far as training, when you're at poll books, balancing poll books to the machine can be very tricky to even an experienced poll worker. So if we have two poll workers putting the numbers in, those two books, and then they have to match to the machine. With this election, no matter how it would have been. With this election, no matter how it would have been done, because we couldn't use our polling locations, multiple wards had to be in one lo- in each location. So that meant that on one side, they had 23 poll books, on the other side, they had 24 poll books. So instead of just walking up to the table and they're sitting there with the poll book, person had to go up, tell them what ward they were in. Then they, the poll workers had to pull the book with the check off number sheet, give them a number, put their number by their name, give them the proper ballot, which again, there would have been 23 different ballots or 24, and then have them go on to vote. Then the poll workers would take that bundle, put it back in the folder so that the next person that came up received the correct poll book. So that takes talent, I'm sorry. Um, you know, and our numbers are looking pretty good. Um, I didn't want to be, you know, accused of our, our election not being balanced, because we can't close out an election with the Wisconsin Election Commission unless our numbers balance. So I just wanted to make that clear. And by all means, if anybody has any questions, just call me or email me and I will explain it better. Or you can go to the WEC and see all their manuals. Um. So just kind of in conclusion, but then I also have some questions that were asked by Alderman that I will answer. Um. So we had in-person voting for a little over two weeks with hardly any lines. The city was not ones that disenfranchised the voters. It was the parties that opposed either extending the time to get absentee ballots mailed and returned or postponing the election. The clerk's office is always open for you to come in and ask questions or discuss things. I actually didn't hear from anyone. Um, I had some alders call with encouraging words. I did have Alder Weary, the Saturday before the election, come knocking on my window and telling me I'm doing a good job. Um. I take my job very serious. And again, it's to make sure that everyone has equal access to the ballot. And the city fought really hard to make sure we could do that, but we weren't given that opportunity. And I, I feel horrible that people could not get their vote in. Going forward, the clerk's office will need more people who are certified in the Wisconsin system. And we are talking, we're in discussion on that. Um, and hopefully the WEC will update the system to make it faster to produce um, an absentee ballot, which it wasn't before they did their upgrade. Um, this is more steps. Um, so we are looking to move forward now and, um, see what we can do to make sure that we have enough people to get through since we can plan now. We didn't have that opportunity with this election. Um, so I guess my question now is, Alder Stoyer, you had given me a page of questions. Should I answer, give those answers now or would you like me to wait?
We can talk about a few things, but yeah, go ahead.
Okay. First one was how many voters ended up voting at East High? It was 1,338. West High was 1,320. Your second question, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, that would be, that would have averaged out 2.6 voters per minute that voted. If you extended the original 13 hours to 17.5 hours for the overflow, overflow voters who were in line at 8:00 PM, it would almost be 0.8 voters per minute. How could this have been improved? For one thing, not, not every voter is the same. Um, some might need to register, filling out a form, showing proof of residence. Some people come prepared. Some poll workers go through, have to go through a list of the proof of residence that we accept. And that's by law. Um, and some say they didn't bring anything and then the poll worker goes through, hey, do you have anything on your phone that you could use? Um, then the person has to show their photo ID to get the ballot. People and poll workers, it's, it's not a machine on a conveyor belt. Every, you know, there's different situations. Um, how many voting machines were at East, at West? Um, and I answered that in, in my, my talk. Polls were open from 7:00 to 8:00 PM. There were 31 polling stations in Green Bay. Yes, but not all polling locations wanted us in the building. I kind of went through that. I will tell you that UWGB had three wards. We couldn't be there. Atonement Lutheran, two wards. Fire Station Number Five, two wards. Union Congregational Church, one ward. Our Savior Lutheran, one ward. Bethel Evangelical Lutheran Church, one ward. St. Elizabeth's Seaton Church, two wards. And Botanical Gardens, one ward. That was a total of 13 wards that didn't have a home. Three polling locations were maybe, that was Salvation Army, one ward. First Presbyterian Church, two wards, and St. Paul's Methodist, one ward. So that added up to four wards. So that was 17 wards that we didn't have a place for them to be. Not including the ones that I stated before that maybe want to fit into the social distancing um, laws, rules. You said people are still waiting outside at 8:00 PM to vote. I said, yes, at both places. The law states anyone in line to vote at 8:00 PM are allowed to vote, no matter how long it takes. Everyone, every person that decided to stand in line did vote. Um, you asked the last voter at East High, it was around 11:30. West High was around 12:30. Um. You asked how many registered voters in the city of Green Bay? At the time that I was looking this up, it was 52,130. That number changes daily. We had 14,000, um, you said 14,376 absentee ballots were sent out from the Green Bay clerk's office starting when? That was in the beginning on March 17th, um, that we mailed those out. We had gotten the ballots like maybe the 15th or 16th. And, and we have the envelopes ready and ready to go just to stuff the ballots. Uh, you said, given that Governor Evers wanted to delay the election until June 9th, 2020, nearly 38,000 remaining voters in time to have the election as an absentee ballot only election. My response to that is we're hoping that if it came to that, the WEC would have been able to do some things behind the scenes to allow us to grab all remaining registered voters that didn't have a request on file. The way we would do it now is each request gets printed out individually after that last initial bunch, batch. We had more absentee ballots coming in than we could print out. And I did explain that I called the WEC. Each, um, you said each ballot takes five minutes to process with a minimum of six touches by a clerk to complete that. That comes to a total of 1,198 man-hours for the 14,376 absentee ballots that were handled, all without a break. My response, each individual request takes approximately five minutes if a person is proficient, along with being certified in the Wisconsin system. A person has to take hours of training to get certified to use the system. Once certified, the WEC issues a username and password with a blue fob key for security. And as far as training goes, um, I do have, a lot of this can be found at the WEC. Um, there's different levels of certification. Um, in the Wisconsin system, there's some for clerks, just data entry, um, some to just view. Um, I, I mean, I could, I could go on and on. Um, poll worker training, that, um, under the WEC, for training, Wisconsin statutes require that all election inspectors receive training at least once every two years. The municipal clerk will provide this training and should document that the inspectors have been trained. And I do have a huge spreadsheet of all the hours they train. Um. Currently, there is no specific prescribed curriculum or length of training provided by the election division. Um, at a minimum, election inspectors be instructed that it be detailed in the Election Day manual, which I sent you the link to that. And it's the responsibility of the municipal clerk to ensure that election inspectors have received training. Um. Okay, so, let's see, when I talked about the five minutes to process, I had already gone through the, the the steps to get an absentee ballot out. You asked, how much does an absentee ballot cost in materials and postage? Who in the end is paying for all this? What budget's deal with this? The outer envelope is eight cents, inner envelope is eight cents, two labels comes to 12 cents. Ballot is 40 cents, postage is 38. To mail it to the voter, we get a break because we have a service, 50 cents to have the voter mail it back. So it's a total of a dollar, 56 cents each, um, per absentee ballot. It comes out of the election budget that you approve in the fall. For mailing ballots, a minimum of 32 clicks is needed to process the application. And I already answered that. Clerk maintains that given a few extra days that they would have processed the nearly 3,000 absentee ballots that remained, which in effect would have made the in-person election a moot point. I don't believe it would have completely ended the lines, but it sure would have helped them. Um. So on April 2nd, 2020, in the evening, Judge Conley of the federal court had issued an order related to absentee ballots for the next week's election. The court ordered the following. A deadline for the receipt of absentee ballots is extended to 4:00 PM on Monday, April 13th. The court specifically did not add a requirement for a postmarked by deadline as long as the ballot is returned by the new deadline. So what that meant was, we thought by Wednesday, we would have, have them all out, which would have been the 8th. On the 6th, um, at about 6:30, we were all working at home on labels and we heard that it was overturned. We were told just to stop processing labels. So that's the reason why everyone, they added a day, they added Friday for people to request, and yet they cut us short on getting them back. That for us to get them out. For them to get back. So, um, that was our issue with the absentee ballots. Um. Can we decide for the breakdown of the 1,198 man-hours as to what was performed by clerk? Um. And I'm just not quite sure where you got that number. Um, every department helped. I also have the time, um, Diana in Finance, the Finance Director, she put together, um, but it was self-reported. And the break, um, to break it down, there was 1,658 hours that other city staff helped us. Number of employees that assisted were 86. Um, estimated assistance per employee was 19.3 hours. Uh, the clerk's office had, um, and like I said, for some of them, um, it was not as much because they didn't have an opportunity with a laptop at home. Um, the breakdown for that is, um, 33 hours of overtime by one of the clerk staff. Another had 14.75. And keep in mind, this had, some of this had to do with the coronavirus also, because some have children at home and they have no daycare. Another one had 35 hours. I had 130, 136 hours of overtime. And the deputy clerk had 64 hours of overtime. We were working nights, weekends. Um, like one of the Madison clerks said, you end up blazing over because you are just so exhausted. Uh. Let's see. In a typical spring election, what are the totals for in-house voters for absentees? You asked for 2016 and 2018. I can actually give you the numbers for, um, the last four years. 2016 at the polls was 28,630 absentee ballots, 2,778. 2017 at the polls, 10,212 absentee, 1,314. 2018, 11,789 at the polls, 1,752 absentee. And in 2019, we had 17,559, absentees was 2,488. This election at the polls, 2,658 absentees, 11,931 were returned. So you can see where it was a total flip flop. In your, in your estimation, what were the factors that caused the largest increase? Um. I, again, I think it was because they couldn't return their, they didn't get the ballot and some decided to go to the polls. Um, we talked about the poll worker training. Um, you asked about the National Guard assisting the election in Appleton. It seemed to be fairly organized event. Why was the National Guard not utilized in Green Bay? Um, I talked about National Guard and why we didn't use them, but I don't have the facts on Appleton. Um, and something that the public will never see is how all these places balance, if they balance their election. To me, that's huge. Um, you said there were no bathrooms outside as folks waited two to four hours in line. Was this an oversight? We were in a coronavirus pandemic, just like we are now. And I don't know if we would have been allowed to use porta potties. Um, if someone had to use the bathroom, they could have gone up to the person manning the door and told them they needed to use the bathroom. The door person would have accom- made accommodations for social, social distancing at that point. You said Sandy Juno said the election issues in Green Bay were not related to COVID-19 as much as it was in efficiency. She stated that the National Guard was trained and ready to go. I talked about that already and I actually have that e- email that she receives, they weren't all trained. Um. Um, could not the National Guard have viewed training videos weeks ago? So that, so that if they were deployed to the election site, that they would have been up to speed? Well, like I stated before, we weren't aware of the National Guard until Sunday, April 5th. You would have to ask the state why they weren't trained sooner. Another clerk, like I said, she had the same concerns as I did. Are there jurisdictions in Wisconsin that can email your absentee ballot to you since the original form says that that is possible? The law states absentee ballots may be emailed, but the city of Green Bay only does overseas and military voters. The reason for this is it's a complicated process for people to get right. Very few do it correctly. Um, once the ballot is mailed to us, mailed back, we have to recreate that ballot. So in my mind, that's another room for error by us recreating. And can you imagine if all those 12,000 people that got absentee ballots were emailed and we would have to remake 12,000 ballots on Election Day? There's no way we could do it. Just no way. And it's not as easy as just copying it over. Two people have to step aside, they have to copy that. You have to mark the one ballot, the original as one, the recreated one as one. Has to be initialed, has to be written in the inspector statement. Lot to that. Um. See. So some people did email on, um, Election Day and asked for that since they didn't receive their ballot. And I had to tell them no, because once it was requested a certain way, they could not ask for email. And that was per the WEC. You said perception in the community centered on the fact that there didn't seem to be a Plan B or Plan C. Explain. We were in, we're in this pandemic. And I don't, I, I guess I don't understand what people thought we could do. Um, the chief inspectors did everything they could. They asked for more tables, they divided up the poll books in wards more. But we only had so many sneeze and cough guards. There was one group at East that decided they didn't, they were okay with not a sneeze cough guard, which I wasn't thrilled with, but it was, they made that decision. West High, they all wanted to be behind those, those guards, which I totally understand. So I think Alder Stoyer, that answers all your questions. I can't hear anybody.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Alder Stoyer, just, just one second.
I'm sorry.
Alder Stoyer. Clerk Testy, just finish up your presentation and then we'll move on to questions, because we do have somebody else in the queue.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, let's see. I'm just not sure if I covered. I'm, that, that's fine. I'm good with that. Thank you.
Thanks for your presentation. Thanks again for your work, the work of your staff and the work of our, our poll workers. Um, Alder Weary.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Chris. Um, yeah, I could tell when I knocked on the window, you kind of gave me that glazed overlook. So I could tell at that point you were pretending. Lot of information and I know this will be going to a committee anyway next week. So some of it we can parse at that time. Um, I, I fully expected, as did, I'm thinking, uh, most of the council, written report. Um, why wasn't there one? Cause that, that was a lot of information and sometimes your, your mic cut in and out. So we heard part of it.
The reason why is because it's a lot of information. I could go on and on and on at digging even deeper into all this. Elections are not easy. So I hit on the highlights, things that, um, I've received emails on, questions on, um, hearing about the National Guard. Um, you know, if you want me to get in deeper into the election as to how it works, I can do that, but that would be, I mean, you might as well go to the WEC and look at all the manuals then. I mean, if you have questions, by all means, ask me. I'm, I'm, I'm ready.
Well, and, uh, I, obviously I do have a request going to protection and policy next week. Um, strangely, and I didn't really get a great answer. That committee never met last week, so we can't discuss that item. And when I asked for it to be put on as a committee, the whole, because they didn't meet, that didn't happen also. So, um, my request for this to be looked into by the Wisconsin's Election Commission will be discussed next week at protection and policy. So if people have some detailed questions, we can hold off till then. Uh, Chris, um, who has the final say on election issues? Is it, is it you or the mayor? I mean?
The mayor and I, Celestine and Vanessa would have meetings every morning. We updated each other on what was going on. Um, the best decisions were made at the time, which was changing pretty much hourly.
That didn't answer my question though. I appreciate that. It's a nice answer, but who has the final say? Is it you or the mayor?
As far as the polling.
Who's in charge of the election? Who makes the final call? Who makes the final call on something to go down to polling places or to not take volunteers or not take the National Guard? Is that you? Or can you be overridden by the mayor? Or who makes that call?
Alder Weary, you know, I, I don't think there was a situation where there was any overriding going on. I, I talked about the decision points as I saw them, um, decisions made because of.
I just want to know who makes the call.
Because of the radical reduction.
Who makes the call?
That we experienced. It's a collaborative process. Uh, obviously Clerk Teskey is the, the chief election administrator here in the city of Green Bay. Um, but.
Where does the buck stop, Mr. Mayor?
The dialogue that exists.
Somebody's got to make the call.
Clerk's office and, uh, and the mayor's office i- is very similar to the exchanges that always go on with our department heads and senior staff here in the city. So I've, I've taken full ownership. I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what you're asking. I've taken full ownership.
I want to know who makes the final call.
And the decisions that were made. I've taken that responsibility.
I'm not debating you and I was asking the clerk. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna re-ask the clerk that question. Um, Chris, if you had something you felt strongly on, could you have enforced that? Could you have said, no, we're gonna have four polling places like we originally set, all four high schools? Could you have demanded that?
Actually, that, that is a scenario that played out, um, when the mayor, um, decided to go with the two gyms. I, I thought, okay, and my brain started working, thinking what plan? And I said, okay, we'll have tables for each ward. And at that time, then he said, wait a minute, he said, that's too many people in there. And I thought, good point, good point. So he was following what was given to us by the WEC. Other, other entities wouldn't answer what was the safest layout. So what he was doing was following a high school having a door in, a different door out, um, the least amount of people in. And I got what he was doing.
Wouldn't it make more sense to have more smaller lines, people in and out than putting everybody in two?
You're exposing more people.
Okay. Now think about that for a second. You're taking a thousand people and putting them at East or West.
They were outside. Okay.
I was there nine hours. I saw them congested.
Alder Weary, you need to maintain some order here. So it's a question and an answer. It's not a running dialogue.
Okay. So here's, here it is. If we would have had multiple polling locations, that would have been more people running the election with the same amount of people coming in, which is more people. By having it at the high school, they were outside, six feet apart, let in by someone at the door. So it's the same poll workers, not as many poll workers and the same amount of people. So in my mind, I understood exactly what he was saying. And if you read all the different communications from the WEC, that's what he was trying to follow. And hindsight is 2020. So it might look easy for you to say that, but that isn't, if you actually look at the plan, that was the better option for less people to be infected. Chance of infection.
Well, I'm, I'm curious, how could Madison, Appleton, Racine, Chaboygan, Schwab, and NTPR, everybody else around the state except Milwaukee, have no issues and have very short wait times?
I'd like to know where you're.
Volunteers. I, I spoke to an alderman in Chaboygan. They reached out to high school seniors, to people coming back from college. I know political parties can help. We turned them down.
So.
And again, Alder Weary, I've already addressed that. I addressed that last week in my report to council.
You didn't want to put them at risk, even though they're volunteering. They're saying, hey, this is gonna help our community and I don't care if I'm at risk.
Well, that, that's a separate issue about volunteers. The volunteers were put to use. I, as I stated last week or at our last meeting, rather, I was not comfortable actively recruiting people into an unsafe process, which is what the election was. I was not comfortable.
Even though the rest of the state did.
Alder Weary, I was not comfortable pressing employee, city employees into service in this environment either.
The state was, but Mayor.
Right. Yeah. And, and so, you know, we can compare and, and learn some things there. Absolutely.
Also, I just wanted to.
10, 15 minutes to vote? I think Madison was 10, 15 minutes to vote and they have way more people than we do.
And I.
I just really think we need a fully, well, hold on. I, I think we need a, we need a really transparent report and timeline on communications and decisions made. We owe that to the people who couldn't vote. We all heard from them and everybody in there who's shaking their head, no. We heard from them. I heard from people who didn't vote the first time ever, 50, 60 years. They couldn't stand in line for four hours. Our decisions to put it into two polling locations caused that. So blame it on the state, blame it on whoever you want. Our decisions took a bad situation and made it far, far worse, horribly worse. And the buck has to stop somewhere. And if it's just you, Mr. Mayor, well, fine.
I don't, I don't know. I don't know how many times I can, I don't know how many times I can own it or accept the buck, Alder Weary, but I have.
That's great. You can own it. I'm just telling you the frustration and anger that's out there. You can sidestep it and, you know, hide and.
I don't know who sidestepped in what, Alder. I've been very transparent.
What, what are the repercussions, the accountability? If this were a private company, there would be people gone.
Do you have a question, Alder? Yeah, go ahead, Clerk, Clerk Teskey.
Um, I just want to state, I also have people that I've talked to. Um, evidently in Ashwabanen, they weren't even allowed to ask the high school students to work because they didn't feel it was safe. So it's everyone's opinion as to what was safe and what wasn't. And, um, I, I guess I'd like to know, Alder Weary, where you're getting the information that everything was hunky dory every place else because I'm not hearing that. I heard Madison.
Compared to four hour waits? As opposed to three and four hour waits, I would say it was hunky dory, except for Milwaukee. They're always a mess though.
But again, I have heard. Can I finish please? Again, I have heard from many people that they are thankful for what we did. I have received flowers. I've received beautiful thank you, handmade thank you notes, wonderful emails of support. So there's two sides to all of it. And a lot of people that have emailed me, asking me why they didn't receive a ballot. I explained to them, even though it was disappointing to them, they didn't vote, they understood. So, you know, I, I guess I, I'd like to know, cause I'd like to talk to those people then, how it went so well, because I'm, that's not what I'm hearing. I, I think, um, I really think we did an excellent job. If we could have got maps and T ballots out, which we couldn't, the lines would have been.
Excellent job. I wouldn't use excellent.
Any further questions, Alder Weary? Do you have further questions, Alder Weary?
Uh, no, my last.
All right. Thank you, Alder. Uh, nobody else is in the queue here. Press your buttons if you haven't. Alder Dorf, looks like you're interested in speaking.
Mayor, Alder Vanderlees has his hand up.
Alder Dorf, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I'm, I'm confused as to what Alder Weary was trying to get at. Like someone needs to be punished. Um, I, I don't understand that point of view. But what I do want to say is, uh, thank you so much, um, Clerk Teskey for putting this report together. It obviously took you hours and hours and hours. You went through a really rough election that took you hours and hours and hours. You haven't been able to get much sleep. This is a lot hanging over you. And I want you to know that I support you. I support what we did as a city. I support the decision not to ask volunteers or to press people. I'm sorry, to depress people into working from the city in a dangerous situation. Um, uh, we did the best we could. This is a national crisis. There hasn't been a COVID-19 before. 1918, there was the Spanish flu. This has never happened before. For, for someone to get a punishment, it seems like it would have been purposely done. We would purposely have set out to disenfranchise voters, purposely not made good decisions. That's not what I'm hearing. I'm hearing we found out about the National Guard at the 11th hour. Now tell me, here it is Sunday night, Monday is the day before the election. How do you let people know if you're gonna open up more election sites? You, you, you would have people going to what they thought was the election site, which was East or West. And then what? Stand in line and be told, oh, oh, no, 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 we changed that. You, you have to go to Preble now, even though you've been standing here two hours. It's in, it would be impossible. You don't plan an election the day before an election. So we didn't get the, um, the help from network. If we're still in this situation, August or in November, can you hear me? In August or in November, then we know that the National Guard would be available and we make different decisions. We only had a limited amount of information. No one purposely said, let's just make this worse. Nobody did. Everybody did the best job they could and they tried the best that they could. And I applaud your efforts and I want to thank you so much. That's all.
Thank you.
Alder, Alder Sawyer.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Um, like I said, Chris, you know, I came in and asked a lot of those questions and it, you know, they weren't, a lot of it was for information. You know, I was just trying to grasp it because let's face it, you know, we, we each represent 8,700 constituents and they all, and people had questions. I, I even, um, emailed 55 of my citizens and I got 35 callbacks and many, you know, you'd probably like to read some of these, but I'm not gonna go through all of them. It, you know, I think people were frustrated, you know, I think the fact you were behind the scenes, one of the things, the problem, you know, we couldn't get through to your office because you were inundated. So there were times where we needed to ask some questions and we, we, we were, we couldn't because you were so busy. So I understand that the dynamic. Um, I think most of the people that I interviewed or talked to, they said that they really needed, uh, what they came up with the election was that they needed two more polling places and waiting in line caused health concerns. That was about 50% of the people. That was the big worry that they had. Most, 71% of the people of the 35 that replied said the election should have been delayed. And 74% said that the National Guard should have been called. So, and you've already talked about the National Guard. So I understand that. But I'm just letting you know that, you know, we as Alders still get a lot of, uh, feedback from people. I mean, there's some people, and I, I tried to interview people that were Republican, Democrat, independent and apolitical. So it didn't really matter. I think it's important to at least listen to the people. Um, moving forward, um, I know you, you did a, as well, a good, of a job as you could. I, I respect you and your position very much. But like I said, uh, the citizens were asking questions and, and we just needed to kind of try to address those as best as possible. People want to be heard. That's all. They want to be heard. And like Alder Weary said, that many, there are folks that could not vote because they're older and they just couldn't vote at all. So that, that was tough. So am I putting blame? I, you know what? I had folk blaming everybody from the mayor to the Supreme Court, to the city clerk. Some people said there's no blame. People blamed the governor, the Wisconsin legislature. Everybody was to blame. Nobody had, some had no opinions. Some blamed the council and some blamed the media. So I really didn't get a good handle as far as a concentrated vote or what, what, what happened. So I just got a lot of information from a lot of people and that's it. And I, I'm just saying, I find that you did a, as well a job as you could. It was disappointing under the circumstances, but I am, I am not here to point any fingers. I just asked a lot of questions because a lot of people were asking and I just needed to know as much as I could. So, you know, if this does go to protection and policy, I would listen to that. But, uh, as far as I'm concerned, I did everything I could with the citizens. So I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, Alder Vanderlees? Not sure if you're muted on another device, sir, Alder.
Okay, Mayor, uh, my, my thoughts are on, on moving forward on, on the next elections coming up. Can you hear me now, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, on the next elections coming up, that we, we get the, you know, the, the proper resources to, to do the job. Uh, the citizens of Green Bay, like a lot of them are disappointed that they weren't able to vote. I had a lot of people in my district that, uh, you know, mentioned to me that, you know, they hadn't voted, you know, first time we hadn't voted in 60 years. So my, my thoughts are on moving forward. I know we've had a, a rough election, this last election period here. But on moving forward, I, I think we have to have the resources and we have to have, uh, a good plan going forward. You know, if we gotta seek help other places, you know, we should do it. And, uh, you know, we overtaxed the people that were in the, in the office there, in the clerk's office. We didn't have enough personnel there to get the job done and, and that's, and, and, and the thing is that we didn't have a good result on the election itself. So my, my thoughts are that as we move forward to the next election, that we got all the Ts and Is crossed and dotted so that, you know, people are gonna be saying, gee, this went a lot better this next election. So we, we have an election in August and we got one in November. So, uh, I hope we can get some good input as far as how we can get the job done and that, that people will be very, very happy about the, the next election coming up. And I, I thank all the people that, you know, came out to vote and, uh, the ones that weren't able to vote. We're gonna do better the next time around and I, I just hope we can do that as a city and, uh, learn from what we went through this last election. And I, I know that as far as, uh, people that were, you know, wanted to vote, uh, you know, curbside, uh, we, we've gotta find a good plan that, you know, people don't have to wait that long. And hopefully we can have the polls open this next time. I, I believe that, you know, having the polls open and, and, you know, the absentee ballots, it's been overwhelmed the whole, the whole area as far as, you know, city of Green Bay. So I just hope that we can move forward and, and do a good job on the next two elections here and this, for this coming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder, any response, Clerk Teskey?
No, that, that is our plan is to, you know, move forward now, um, No, that is our plan, is to, you know, move forward now, kind of planning maybe for the August to be like the April election, and what can we do to improve, you know, with more staff? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Sorry, sorry, my button's here. Yes, this is Alder LaFave. I just want to say that Clerk Teskey and her staff, by her report, it sounds like they really worked and worked to try to get something halfway decent. And it was just a perfect storm. It seemed like everything just happened almost beyond their control. And so I will not blame them at all. I don't, I don't think we need to be doing any blaming right now of anybody. I think what we need to do is work forward. And I do have some suggestions that I think I will email Clerk on that, and I will make some suggestions that I think that would work for the future if we are in this pandemic again, if it extends till this fall election. So I think I will do that. But I just want to say that I think that the ones that worked on this, they put a lot of time in, and they really wanted something to work, and they tried. So I just wanted to thank them for all their hours and their time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I think, Chris, I just have a number of questions. I'm going to just do rapid fire. I mean, my intent right now is to maybe do some information gathering, and I'm going to kind of save, since there's not a motion on the floor, I'm just going to save, you know, any judgments or pontificating until such a time that occurs. But one thing I do want to say is, I don't think anybody's questioning, and I certainly hope not, questioning the level of effort that you and your team had put in, because I think what you guys did was absolutely remarkable. So I think some of the questions I have, though, are related a little bit more around the planning and execution, the sort of work smarter, not harder concept, if you will. Because really, at the end of the day, what I want to see is, how do we make corrections moving forward? You talked about the need for individuals to be certified to work in the system. Could you please elaborate on who is certified, how many people are certified, and what it takes to train more people to be certified?
Sure. Let me just get to my tab on that, please. Right now, we have the five of us in the clerk's office certified. So I'm going to read to you what I had, what I put together on training. Below is a description of WISVOTE, which is the database for the Wisconsin Elections Commission, and the training needed. WISVOTE is a web-based voter registration application system that is accessed directly from an internet browser. WISVOTE credentials are required to access the WISVOTE system. It goes into the licensing and everything. It says, the WEC asks that WISVOTE users work on only one computer, and we do have to have on the computers a certain security on it. Mike from IT took care of that, he could talk more on that. But the clerk, this role requires complete WISVOTE training in the certification program. Users will receive training on almost all topics related to administering election. Absentee training is optional. Data entry, this role requires limited training in the general certification program. Users will be certified to enter voter registration applications, record voter participation, and track absentee ballots. The WEC's data entry, this role requires no WISVOTE training, but the user must sign a confidentiality agreement, and the clerk must submit a request to the authorized users' agreement in order to obtain the correct permissions. Users can view their municipal data in WISVOTE and have permissions to add, delete, or modify information only on the election statistics-related reports, which, like EDR, postcard report, inspector statement, election reconciliation form. Then there's also a read-only. New WISVOTE users will receive WISVOTE credentials by following the WEC's online training and certification program. Request election training, POC access, send an email, a complete and signed copy of a request to add, identify the role type for each user identified on the form. And then it talks about getting us a password. Take election training. Training is through, after you get your login and password, you are allowed access to the Wisconsin Elections Training website to allow for new users to complete the required training. So there is a curriculum checklist that they have to go through and do these webinars within the system.
And Clerk, so, I mean, really, maybe to get at the heart of what I'm asking here, and I appreciate that in-depth response, but it sounds like we basically have five people in our office right now that are trained to have access at those various levels?
Correct.
And so would that be an area that we could perhaps explore as getting additional individuals trained as backups, so that if there is a higher volume, that we could respond to it more aggressively?
That's what we're looking at, and I did have some planned for this year because of the presidential. Because of the coronavirus, they declined to come in and work, which I totally understood. Otherwise, I would have brought them in. But we are looking at other options within the city to have people trained, which would be fantastic.
Okay. If I could just interject, Alder Johnson, I would totally agree with the implication of your question. And as Clerk Teskey has suggested, it's something that we've already talked about, talked with Human Resources Director Joe Folds about that, Director Ellen Becker as well, since she supervises. Chris, you know, the city election is one of the fundamental duties of city government, and I believe, you know, we all need to be really mission-focused on making sure that we carry elections out successfully. As others have suggested, Alder Vanderleest, in particular, the office itself was overtaxed, was overburdened, and we need to be prepared for that scenario to play out in August, but certainly in November.
Okay. Clerk, you've mentioned just a large volume of duplicate absentee ballots that were being driven to your office. Is that completely controlled by the MyVote.WI site? Or, I mean, is there a way that the, assuming that that's the case, is there a way that the state can sort of mitigate that impact?
The clerk, I'm on the clerk's list, and so clerks can throw out their ideas or what they're thinking, and clerks have contacted them already, asking for them to eliminate that. I would still probably have that same thing happening with the emails along with MyVote, but at least it wouldn't be like six of them in MyVote.
Sure.
So yes, we've asked for that to be looked into.
And I think even from, just purely from an efficiency perspective, it seems to me that even emails audit a system, just so that you've got that check, right? So that way you're not processing it quite. Because the objective here is to minimize the number of times you're handling something. And so to have it funnel through one system, even if there's multiple endpoints, right? It's got to eventually get to the same system.
We had issues, and I'm hearing that more and more from the clerks. The system did go down a couple times, and that, you know, that was an issue. There's just some other things that, you know, when it's computers, some clerks are stating that they don't even have requests for people that requested. That's more visual in a smaller municipality than it is with the City of Green Bay being so large. So we kind of just have to go by what we're given. So if somebody asked, and like I said, that's why I would go and search to see if I had it, and then I could tell the person, yep, we have it, it's just not processed yet. So that's another issue that I hope they look into. And the reason why we have separate email, some people couldn't get into the system. That could be because their birthdate was entered wrong. And we send out what's called HAVA letters, and so a person will get a letter saying, something isn't matching here. Can you please call the clerk's office and verify that information? So if somebody got a letter and their birthdate's wrong in the system, when they go to MyVote, they'd be putting in their correct birth date, but that's not how it is in the system, so it's not going to find a match. So people should always respond to those letters so that we can have a clean slate. We also had others that said, I'm not finding that I'm registered. I had many of those, and I sent those to the WEC. The first one, she said, well, I find her. And I had said, I can too, but this person can't. So every time I got that, I sent it to the WEC to get a response, and after a while, I didn't, which, no blame, I'm not placing blame, they were inundated the same as we were. But it's frustrating to the citizens. So then I would go in, and I'd have them, with their email, request it that way. We also have people that aren't comfortable with that system, they're more comfortable emailing, so I always want to make sure I have that option for people that don't want to go into a system, that they can just email me and request it. Because, you know, snail mail is really getting to be snail mail. So, but then other people take advantage of that and request on all different platforms. So, you know, that's kind of a hard thing, too.
Sure, okay. I think about, it was probably about two weeks before the election, I'd sent you an email regarding drive-up voting, and I believe I received a response from Chief of Staff Jeffries. Was that an option that was considered?
Drive-up voting, and, okay, I was watching TV and saw the drive-up voting. What I saw, so I'm not criticizing, because maybe just what I saw wasn't at the right time. You can't just have one person going up to a car with a ballot. To me, it'd be no different than curbside voting, where two people would have to go out. So at this, at this point, because we didn't have, I have five people in the office, two were over at Transit, left three of us, one had to leave because she didn't have childcare but worked from home. That left the clerk and the deputy clerk in the office, trying to do labels. We didn't have that possibility. Some of those places that were doing drive-through, though, did set up tents. Again, that's a cost.
Sure. So more of a staffing issue in that regard, then? Which I think has been well-stated, that that was a big challenge.
Yeah. I would really have to think that through to make sure that we are following proper protocol.
Okay. And just on that one, real quick, Alder Johnson, you know, City of Racine essentially adopted that as their strategy for the April election, not just leading up to it. Every polling location was actually drive-up in Racine. So I think it's absolutely something that we should take a look at, if it's something that can be done appropriately and safely and legally, definitely for August. Now, November with weather presents some additional challenges, but yeah, something I'm very interested in looking into.
Okay, great. Clerk, what additional support was offered? I mean, I think we talked a lot about, like, how taxed you were, your existing staff, and how we did mobilize maybe some additional city staff internally, but I'm just curious if you could expound upon that a little bit more, in terms of what support was offered to expand your capacity to process absentee ballots?
As far as certification, I said I didn't have time to sit with someone. You know, you can't just take the training and plop someone down and expect them to be able to do it. They would have a lot of questions, which would take away from the staff. So we had so many people doing everything that didn't entail the certification. So what we would do is, you know, we would work at night or the weekend and get all these labels generated, bring them in, put them on the counter. We would have from all different departments come in, they would grab the labels, and this was mainly done up in the Park Department with different departments, but they took ballots up there, they took the envelopes and labels, and they just did that all day long. And as we were doing labels during the day, we'd put them on the counter, they'd take them up there. I did have someone email me saying, my wife got a ballot, I didn't, who wanted to know why. And I felt bad about that, but if we, with that many coming in, if we put labels on the counter, and someone took one that asked after, you know, and it was during that cutoff time, unfortunately, someone did get missed. It would be too hard for us to do everything in order. We tried to take the order of the requests. As they were printed out, they were kept in order, but as far as labels, they were not. But we got, like I said, every department helped us.
When it comes to the poll worker piece, I'm just curious, I guess, what, if anything, did we do to secure additional poll workers? I mean, was it, it sounds, and specifically, I've heard things, you know, that people were turned away. I mean, was it really brooded in the training? Was that the issue?
Definitely. You know, I was keeping the names, but I didn't have any chance to train, to just, like I said, take a webinar, and they first go in and take a webinar. I mean, I have people in their first training, when I actually do face-to-face training, the people that are brand-new will sit there, and you can just see the glazed-over look. And I'll look at them, and I'll say, it's okay if you're not grasping this all right now, but you're getting the verbiage, you're getting, you know, and then you'll go to the polls, and you'll get a little more. We have actually our own manual of how we do things. Every clerk does things a little differently. We have to follow the law, but there's still a little leeway in doing this and doing that. So it just wasn't that simple. I didn't have time to train. And if I'm going to put people out there, it's not a matter of just getting bodies in the seats. My concern was being able to balance the election afterward. Because, for instance, if somebody would mark in the poll book in the wrong spot, so then somebody in the system will get, say that they voted, and the person that truly voted didn't. What if they forgot to put a number in completely? I will never know who deserved that vote in their record, and people do look at their history. So that was my whole concern, is I want to be able to balance this election, and I need people that know what they're doing to make that happen.
Okay. One of the things I know, Mayor and Clerk Teskey, other one, I know that it's been made clear, right, that we didn't want to make the decision to implicate people in this process. It was a health concern, so I'm not looking to dig into that issue, so much as it is a question of, did we consider offering hazard pay? Where the essence of hazard pay is that people know, you know, that they're doing hazardous work. Was hazard pay an option that was considered at all?
No, it's not something that was considered for city employees generally. Clerk Teskey can talk a little bit about a reimbursement maybe for the poll workers that did commit to working.
Right. We didn't, we didn't set anything ahead of time. I was following WEC's direction, and they were saying anyone 65 and older, they didn't recommend to work. So I checked with the Law Department, and they said to send that out, make sure that everyone knows it's not, or anyone with an underlying condition also, it's not recommended they work. I was looking at it more of a health standpoint. I did ask after the fact now, because normally, if a chief inspector at a two-ward polling location, if one of the inspectors calls in sick and the other one covers both, which is very hard to do, they get more money for that. And so I did request that these workers committing all that time and doing more than one ward, that maybe they could look at getting more money, but not beforehand.
Okay. Just two more questions, bear with me. There was, I think, again, we've covered the issue of the National Guard thoroughly, with one exception, and that is, you know, I recall seeing in the media at least several weeks in advance of the election, that the governor had said that he was going to call the guard to help. Now, I know that specifics were not made avail- Now, I know that specifics were not made available, you know, until before the election. But what I am curious about is recognizing that the governor did make that announcement. Did anybody from City Hall reach out to the governor's office requesting more information about when people would be available, how they would be available? Would they be trained? Did anybody make that proactive touch point with the governor's office?
When I read that information, I know what you're talking about. That was more in response to before the election, not the day of. That was help. And they said nothing about them being certified in the system. So with us having the city staff there to do labels and inserting ballots, we were covered that way. I didn't hear any more after that. But where I needed it, and it was stressed to the county, the bottleneck was processing, getting the labels printed. That was, that was our bottleneck.
Okay. And then one thing that we really haven't touched on much, and I would ask you to maybe just talk about this a little bit. And I know that I had spoken with the mayor prior to the election about this particular item. But who made the decision to close early voting? Which of course was in violation of a ruling from Wisconsin Elections Commission. And then you had obviously reestablished it at Metro. But I'm just curious if you could walk us through that process of like how that decision was made, when that decision was made, and anything that, any information, I guess, that might be relevant and useful. So that again, when we're looking at future elections, if decisions like that need to be made, that we ensure we're in compliance. You know, what are some things that you could maybe share with us through that process?
Well, I was watching the clerk list, and some were doing it by appointment. Some were really restricting the hours. Our concern was, okay, City Hall was closed. Where, where were we going to do this? Where were, because the girls in the office were scared. They were scared of the coronavirus. They wanted to make sure they were protected, and I don't blame them. So then, you know, I, I've always mentioned even, because we don't have glass in our office, you know, the transit station, the water department, they all have the glass. So Director Keewas was kind enough to allow us in the dispatch area. And the girls said, yeah, I would feel good about that. We'll have gloves on. And then we have that glass, we have the speaker we can talk through, and they felt safe that way. And I think that's truly important. Yes, it's their job, but they need to feel secure. So that, that's when we decided then, we were going to have longer days. But, you know, we were short staffed in the office also. And we looked at 10 to 2 was morning and afternoon. And then the law states we have to be open till 5:00 the Thursday and Friday before the election until 5:00. So we did the 10 to 5:00. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and I think if I want to, you know, delve into that.
Alder, just real, real briefly, you are at 5 minutes with your allotted time. So if you could just make this final question real quick.
Yep, and it's actually, I only do have one more thing, and it's really more of a rhetorical question that I just want you to think about in, in, as we head into these August-November elections. And specifically, what is it that we can do to help as a city council? Can we help you recruit more poll workers? Can we help you train people? Can we allocate more resources? Whatever that is. I mean, your imagination is the only thing that's going to limit this. So again, rhetorical question, you don't have to answer it today. But I want you to know that we are here to support you and your team in whatever you do. We just have to know how we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Alder. Thanks. Alder Galvin.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I, I will start off by saying, Mayor, you've taken full responsibility for this. So when I ask this next question, I, I understand that. I was surprised to find out earlier this year that the head of the Transit has the authority to shut down the buses with or without your permission. So I, I am asking, does the clerk have the right to make decisions with or without your permission as it relates to the vote, you know, on voting day?
So, you know, I don't know the legal answer to that question. I'll just say, you know, what I said to Alder Weary, which is that this was a very collaborative process. As Clerk Teskey said, you know, she and I and Celeste, Ms. Jeffries rather, and Attorney Chavez met regularly for a stretch of time. It was every morning at 8:00 or 8:30, checking in to talk about all these things. But as I've said repeatedly, you know, Clerk Teskey, Chris, is our elections expert. So I, I trust her expertise. I value that expertise and I respect it. And so, you know, if, if I wish back to it or a disagreement, you know, that was always taken into account. And I, I just feel very confident in saying that it was, you know, we, we had, I felt like we had consensus going into it, for, for good or ill, obviously. But it was a very healthy dialogue that we had among those who were involved in the discussion.
Okay, and I, and I appreciate that answer, and I appreciate, you know, I know from my years on the police department, command staff always has input. And even if you have to go all the way down into the lower ranks, you, you want to have input. And then you make your best decision based on that. I'm only asking because I just, there seems to be some insinuation out there that there might be a legal standard that the clerk has the right or does not have the right to make these decisions. That's all I was trying to find out. And, and this is for Chris. There are five certified people in your office, and you would make the sixth, or are you one of the five?
I'm one of the five.
Okay. Now, you, someone asked you whether it takes to get certified. Can you give me a timeframe? I was somewhat shocked and awed at the list that you're reading off and everything. But how much time? Is it a day? Is it, you know, like, like we, in the police department again, you've got training standards for certain skills. So for this skill to be one of the five certified people, what is the length of time it takes to get someone trained to that level?
If the last time that I had someone do it was probably about a year and a half ago, it's, it's roughly three, half day to three quarters of a day to go through all the different webinars.
Okay, so, so six hours, say, to, to go through the webinars. Is there any follow up training? Like, do you have them actually sit down on a machine and actually do some hands on training?
That's when we would sit with them and, and have them start getting used to the system. But we would be there with them to answer questions.
Right, to get them warmed up, get them up to speed so they get the repetition in there. How long does that take, would you say? And, and I know you have to squeeze it in amongst all your other skills. So you can't say I'm taking out a day of everyone's work to do this.
The reason why I laugh is because sometimes some of the things that come up, we'll still call the W E C on it. But to actually, you know, we had a couple of girls help with the election after, and they worked, I think, three or four weeks, and they still had questions.
Sure, okay.
It's just not, you know, cut and dry.
Right. Are you the only one that can do that one on one training with them once they've gone through the webinar? Or could another clerk with a lot of experience sit down with these other staff members and get them up to speed with hands on training?
You mean in the, in my, in the staff?
Yes.
It would be Kim or I. We do the training for everything.
Okay, so if we identified, say, for the future, as one of our possible solutions, we identified 10 to 15 city employees who said, you know, I'm willing to take the six hour webinar training. And then you want to make sure, you're not just going to throw them into the pit with the lions. So, so you or Kim would have to sit down with them and run them through a few scenarios and, and get them kind of warmed up to using the computer and, and that kind of stuff, and how to find answers. Okay, okay, getting to the computers. How many computers do we have right now that are set up to work with the state?
That's going to be a mic question. I'm not sure all the ones.
But we have, do we have one for each certified person right now?
We do, but then we also have the laptops now, and we have some at the counter.
Okay, so if we were to identify 15 volunteers who got webinar training, and we said, ah, we don't have enough computers, we could have some standby computers set up in advance that they could use, correct?
I would think maybe the training room up on fourth floor, if that was available. We are having issues, though, what it's called, I guess, OSWAP. That is the security on it. It kind of interferes with some of our other work. So that's, I'm pretty sure that that would happen, but that would be more of a mic question.
So that's an identified issue that we should start addressing now in case we run into the same thing in the future. Okay. Poll workers, now I know we have quite a few, and most of them are older. And so in a situation like this, a lot of them opted out. Can't fault them at all. How long does it take and who, okay, how long does it take to train a poll worker to work at a poll? How many hours?
Ideally, I like them to go through about three hours of face to face training. And then I also send them home for some light reading. We always laugh, of the election manual and then of our training manual, which goes through like the script of what you have to say when a person walks up, things like that.
Sure.
So, you know, you can ask poll workers, they're not comfortable even going into the first one. But I tell them, then they will see the process, what they're reading, then they actually see more hands on. And that chief inspector is the one then that fills them in on the little things. So I always like it if a person can work a primary, and then they're set for the general. So they, they kind of get, you know, a feeling for it in a, a lower turnout election.
All right, and, and usually pair them with someone who has experience?
That's huge.
Okay, and who does that three hours of training? Or is that something they do online?
Well, the W E C now does have training. They, they did come out with it. Otherwise, I would create an agenda. And Kim or I would be the ones to train, depending on our schedule, or if we get sick. There's always one that can do it. And we have five, five training sessions for an election. So there's different time slots for people because there's so many poll workers.
Okay. So I guess for the future, obviously, we're going to try and identify new poll workers, get subs trained up to speed, all that other kind of stuff. And if we know in advance, it helps to get more trained if we know we have a thing. My next question involves the absentee ballot request. Now, people can do it by email, they can do it by mail. Myvote.gov, is that considered an email request? Or is that a third source of requesting an absentee ballot?
That's a third source. It comes, it comes to us, though, as an email to Kim and I.
Okay, so out of those, how many did you say, 17,000 email requests? Some of those were from myvote.gov?
Yes. Most of them were, yes.
All right. Again, thank you very much for everything you've done. I appreciate it. And I think many people do, although we all know we can do better moving forward, and we just have to start working on that process. So again, I thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. We did have Alder Brunet in the queue. He's dropped off, though.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
His work, thank you. I figured it out. My first as the council president.
Question for Clerk Teskey. I heard that the line at West High School stopped for like an hour at some point. Is that true, or?
Someone emailed me that from one of the parties. And so I called over, from what I understand is, there was too many people that ended up in the gym, that they felt they had to hold off until it dispersed.
Okay, all right. And so I think a lot of the other council members asked a lot of the questions I had, so thank you.
Thanks, Alder. We have a couple Alders to speak for a second time in the queue, is that correct? Alder Weary?
I know, I believe there's people who've been watching and waiting for about three hours to get a chance to comment, so I'd make a motion to open the floor.
Okay. Motion made by Alder Weary, seconded by Alder Scanell to open the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay? You guys have it, the floor's open. Do we have folks on line who are interested in speaking?
Good evening, everybody. Vanya Kepke here. If I may speak, I am interested.
Please state your name and address, or state your name, sorry, your address for the record.
Sure, Vanya Kepke. 4850 Stella Court, Hobart, Wisconsin, 54155.
Not sure if we got the street address there. Could you say that just one more time?
Yep, 4850 Stella Court.
Yep, okay, go ahead, sir.
Awesome. Well, first off, I just want to congratulate the new city council. Thank you for your service. Congrats to President Brunet. Congrats to Vice President Dorf on your, on your appointments as well. I also want to thank each one of you for doing a great job in this unprecedented time, specifically to Alderman Johnson for the small business loans you've been working on so tirelessly to help out the constituents of Green Bay. I should mention the heroes at the polls. It was, it was a privilege to work alongside with them for over 13 hours on Election Day at Green Bay East High School and help those 1,338 voters. It was a pleasure to help disinfect those pens, check in the individuals to get them to the right ward, and to manage the lines and direct the flow of traffic. Those are, Chris Teskey. Yeah, you are an amazing person, number one. But number two, you're one of the best clerks in the state of Wisconsin. All the senior citizen poll workers, thank you. You were amazing. Green Bay Police Department and all the first responders who were on scene with managing the election, thank you. Chief Smith, you were there in person at Green Bay East High School. I worked with a lot of your staff throughout the day, so thank you for your help there. Also shout out to Public Works, those shields were perfectly made, the tables fit in right in. So shout out to Public Works, beautiful job. So the few points I just wanted to add, after witnessing what took place at Green Bay East High School for over 13 and a half hours, are these things. I would ask that the city council analysis, the strengths, the weaknesses, opportunities to improve, and maybe even threats that would, may repeat. So SWOT analysis, I would recommend. Independent review by the Wisconsin Elections Commission. They spoke on Saturday a little bit about Milwaukee and Green Bay, and there was definitely some concern voiced on the Wisconsin Elections Commission. I would also recommend that a contingency plan or a manual would be put place, put in place now, knowing what we know. That could be modeled not only by local municipalities, but also around the country. And third is, given that the wards are paper, is there an opportunity to possibly move towards a digital ward or polling system? Where you can keep track of those wards in a digital tablet as, as on other municipalities? That would be a suggestion. So a few suggestions there. And as far as questions that I heard from any of those 1,338, the, the chief election inspector at Green Bay East High School, her name is Terry. She works for the police department. She was the hero. Her ingenuity and her mobility throughout the day really allowed us to process up to two thirds more voters unexpectedly. Because we went from one polling look, one table for voting to three.
Apologies, Mr. Kepke, your three minutes has expired. Should we just wrap up as soon as possible?
Okay, absolutely. So yeah, I would want to say thank you to all of those heroes, as I call them, for your efforts. And as far as the final question, just the 48 National Guards were not used compared to 52 in other municipalities. And just doing what we can to recruit more poll, poll workers. So thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Mayor, can I, can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Vanya, you kind of cut out, so I, I just want to, were you talking about Badger Books? That the poll books would be electronic?
Yes, it was just a lot of shuffling through the paper ones. But yeah, the electronic ones are pretty smooth.
Okay, I just wanted to address that. Those are about $1,500 apiece. And we would need, depending on the voters, we would need three or four per ward. I have looked into all this. It, that's a huge cost to the city. And in the February election, they stalled. And in the February election, they stalled. So I would worry about that. You still, you know, print the poll books, so there's still that backup. But there are some concerns with those. And we're kind of holding off. For one thing, the budget can't support it. We did get express votes. We were forced to get those this year, which we had to bond $130,000 for. Those are the machines that meet ADA compliance. So I guess I would, I understand where that looked really interesting, but there's kinks to be worked out in that. But I am on top of that. Thank you for bringing that up.
Absolutely. Again, thank you for an amazing job.
Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Mr. Kepke. And just to clarify, it was actually Parks Department that made the cough guards. So just want to make sure they get the shout out for their good work. Another member of the public interested in speaking?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go now. Elliot Christensen, 1988 Mulberry Lane. Don't hit the start button until I do. I'm not going to give anybody congratulations because I didn't know we were limited to three minutes again. I've been waiting three hours, so I'm hitting my start button now. All right, so I'm really glad that flowers and letters came. People in prison get flowers and letters. That doesn't excuse poor performance by our city government. People are losing their jobs right now because of this disease and the reaction to it by our governments. Okay? So you guys need to treat this seriously. Passing the buck is inexcusable. Pause to think about that for just a second, okay? You had 13, 14 hours to handle 1,300 voters at these two locations. You decided to have two locations. That's fine. We had two schools. These schools have that many students at the schools. They handle that many students in a day. You couldn't handle that many voters. I don't know what's up with that. You got to figure that out, okay? We have other elections coming up. You got to figure that out. Everybody else, we are the worst in the state of Wisconsin. Congratulating each other for the last three hours. I had to sit and listen to you congratulating each other and flipping coins for three hours so that I can have my three minutes. This is unreal. Nothing was communicated, okay? We didn't know that there were two polling locations until the last minute. So changing your mind at the last minute, that would have been fine because nobody knew the polling locations until the last minute anyway. So why didn't you add some more? That would have been fine. No bathroom. So we're in the middle of a pandemic, but seriously, we're worried about diseases. Sanitation, I think, is probably a little higher than, you know, touching somebody. But fine, you know, whatever. Curbside voting, whatever that process is, I don't even understand what was talked about. You got to set up an appointment. Customer service on that is appalling. This whole process is insane. So now to the National Guard. I have people in my classes that were in the National Guard. They were pulled out of class a week early. They received training. I don't know what kind of insane training the city of Green Bay has that none of the rest of the state of Wisconsin has. But it's got to change. Everybody else handled it and we didn't. We did not. We are the worst. This is Title Town. We're the best, but we're the worst. It's embarrassing. And congratulating yourselves for three hours is appalling. And I don't understand it. I mean, Vanya, he's a great guy. He wants to come on and tell you guys how great you are. You're not great. This is not great. And the city does not think you're great. You can tell yourselves you're great, you can feel you're great all you want, you're not great. And the city does not think you're great right now. They're not all telling you that. They're not all telling you you're great. They're not all telling you you're not great. You're not hearing from everybody. They do not think you're great. People have, that is their civic duty, their civic right. They didn't get to vote. They didn't get to vote. My wife didn't get to vote. That is outrageous. The State Election Commission voted on party lines to not investigate. They were going to take it up, the Milwaukee and Green Bay elections, they voted on party lines not to investigate it. Congratulations, you're going to get off the hook on this because you're not partisan. You know, I heard, I heard from Council President Jesse Burnett that you're not partisan, but you are partisan.
Your three minutes has expired. Thanks for your comments. Is there another citizen on the line who'd like to speak? And we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to close the floor.
Motion made by Alder Scannell.
Seconded.
Seconded by Alder Stevens to close the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay? We are back to regular business. Floor is closed. Alder Weary?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm going to make a motion for a written report from Clerk Teske regarding failures and opportunities from the April 7th, 2020 election.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Alder Weary, seconded by Alder Brunet for a written report produced by Clerk Teske. Further discussion? Alder Dorf?
Thank you. We're doing committee work, it seems, right now on the council floor. This is going to P and P on Monday. This is when these kinds of should be having a plan and bringing that plan forward. I would be against this motion. I'd like it to be withdrawn, but I don't think it will be. But I, we're doing committee work. We're going to be doing this again on Monday. And that is the appropriate place for us to decide what the next steps are. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Dorf. Just maybe a question for Attorney Chavez. This is an informational item. Is it appropriate to entertain the motion that Alder Weary offered? You're on mute, attorney.
Considered an informational item, there is no action that can be taken on it.
Thank you, Attorney Chavez, so that the motion is out of order. Further comments, Alder Weary?
Uh, no, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Steuer?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is for Chris Teske. I just needed to, all those questions that I asked of you, you know, a couple of weeks ago, and you gave quite a few answers. You know, I'm going to be on P and, I'm on the P and P committee. We're going to be dealing with a lot of this. So I would appreciate if you got a copy of those answers that you gave verbally, you know, in a written format, so I could look at those. I think that's important. And that's it. That's all I really need from you. And I would appreciate it before Monday, if possible. You already, you already spoke on it, so it's just a matter of printing it up. So if that's okay, I request that.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scannell?
I would just like to pitch in, I know it was a very trying and difficult time. I think anytime you're going to have a in-person voting during a pandemic, even in places where apparently there's a, things, things, people think things went well. This is just a very difficult, difficult situation. And I appreciate that. And I appreciate your handling it the best you could. I don't think there's any, as Alder Dorf said, any malfeasance here, anything inefficient. You've certainly proven your chops, Miss Teske, in the past. Whenever there was a problem, like when a few years ago with the, at the university, you problem solved that. And the next year, we went, you know, we've been doing fine since then. I see that pretty much the same with this election. I trust your expertise. We'll problem solve this and we'll go forward. I just appreciate all that you've done in this difficult time, as well as the mayor and Attorney Chavez and our chief of staff. So it was a situation that no one should have been put in. And so fortunately, we were. And I just appreciate the job you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Brunet?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick, couple of quick comments and then a question for Clerk Teske. The anger out there is real. I've heard it. Thirty, forty people who are absolutely irate that they didn't have an opportunity to vote. And if they did, the experience they had was very, very poor. And we need to do better as a city and there has to be accountability. Just the stories I've heard are just outrageous. So I'm looking for accountability somewhere along the line. I did, a few people had mentioned the Wisconsin Elections Commission who, who met on Saturday. I listened to that meeting and I think there's a lot of misunderstanding out there. They did not really discuss the Green Bay election very much at all. The three-three vote was to not investigate the Milwaukee election. There were, there was a few folks on that commission who were from the Milwaukee area. So that dominated the discussion. Alder Weary has a communication before the Protection and Policy Committee for a full investigation of the election. My question to Clerk Teske is, would you welcome an independent investigation of the city's election?
My answer to that is bring it on. We did, we followed all the W E C's guidance. There's clerk communications out there. We did everything that we, we possibly could to make it the best election we could under the circumstances, and we have nothing to hide.
Right. And that is not directed towards your professional competence at all. Because up until this point, I had no poor conversations or comments from the public regarding Green Bay elections. This is a first and hopefully it's nominally. But I guess the, the thing we need to understand is that there are a lot of races throughout the city, including this city council, county board, where there is a very narrow margin of victory between the top four getter and the second. So we have, we have denied people the opportunity to vote for their leaders in a, in a proper way that they're deserving as citizens to affect the people who make the decisions that affect their lives. And so it's not to undermine you, Clerk Teske. I don't doubt your sincerity and your truthfulness, but somewhere along the way, something happened and we need to have an independent investigation. We'll discuss that at a later point, but thank you for the time.
Well, can I, can I ask you a, Mayor, can I ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
Alder Brunet, I guess my question to you is, what, what would you do different under the circumstances? We tried everything we could to get the absentee ballots out, but by court order, we couldn't do it. I guess I don't, you know, I'm not saying that. I guess what I'm trying to get at, the clerk's office is very upset that people didn't get their ballot. We, that's what we're there for, is to make sure that everyone can vote. We were so disappointed. I can't, I can't go against a court order. I guess I don't, I don't understand what you're looking for. If you think there's something we could have done to improve and still follow the law, I'm more than welcome to, you're more than welcome to just tell me right now what you think could have been done different.
Sure, Clerk Teske, you presented a lot of information. And then quite frankly, it's a lot to digest. And I agree, I was hoping for some written report that I could review ahead of time. You answered all the questions very forthrightly. I think that's a, that speaks to your professionalism to ask your, answer your question, what would I have done? And this might cross between you and the mayor. I don't want to throw either of you under the bus with, you know. But I think we should never have denied the help of the National Guard. And we should never have made it sound as though that they were not able to step into that situation, considering the fact that they respond to natural disasters and combat zones. And, and that's not to diminish the work that happens in the clerk office and our election volunteers. But for anyone in the city government to suggest that National Guard members were not qualified or not able to step in, I think that that's the sort of thing. That's the thing I've been hearing a lot from the community. Why in the world would anyone have that opinion that National Guard members cannot handle a municipal election? So.
Then, then I just ask that people, I just want to clarify. Go out to the Wisconsin Elections Commission website and look at what it takes to, to understand an election. And, and maybe that will help clarify what I was getting at. You know, other clerks too, if we would have had a whole polling location just of the National Guard, we all had, not all, the ones I've talked to had doubts that that would be able to work. And I didn't want any, anything out there to say that our election did not balance. Because then it would look like something went on with the election. Everybody that went to the polls got to vote. I understand the line was long and I'm sorry for that, but it was because of the coronavirus. So I just want you to see my side of it and, and what it takes to be a poll worker. People really don't understand what that takes and what you need to know. I'm not diminishing, you know, if we could get them trained now ahead and, you know, work with them a little, have at it. But that short a timeframe and then to realize that some didn't get trained, we would have been in a bind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, all further questions, Mayor? Thanks, Alder. Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. And this is actually for Alder Brunet because of some comments he just made. So I want some clarification. You say you're for an investigation. You say you think Chris did a good job, but you said there has to be accountability. I guess I'm asking what kind of accountability you're looking for here? I mean, what are you, what do you mean by that? Thank you.
Alder Brunet?
Well, first of all, we need to have an independent investigation that figure out if there was anything that the city did that they should not have done consistent with state law and how to run elections. As far as what the accountability is, people in government need to be accountable, like any other industry. If there's something that I did as a council member, I may be ceding my authority to make these decisions or not stepping in to, you know, direct things a little more, voice my opinion. And that's something I have to live with as well, that the election was a disaster. It's not a witch hunt at all. It's not to, it's not to demean the character of anyone. And the only way that I think we can get an unbiased opinion is to get someone from the outside who is trained and, and tasked with the responsibility to oversee the elections in the state of Wisconsin to tell us what happened? What did the city do wrong? There were, there were 1,850 municipalities, Clerk Teske mentioned earlier, that she heard from other clerks that, I think you said, the other clerks said that there were some struggles or perhaps that that's what you heard. When I was on that conference call with this Wisconsin Elections Commission, they, they pointed out the, Ms. Megan Wolf, unless I'm hearing her wrong, she said that the elections in all 1,848 municipalities other than Green Bay and Milwaukee went fine. So that's what I heard from her mouth. And so to answer your question, Alder Galvin, I, I don't know at this point. All I know is I, my phone's been ringing off the hook and I've been getting email after email from people who are calling for the mayor to recall and resign and get impeached and all this stuff. I don't want that sort of stuff, but I think that when the public is demanding and angry about things to that level, we need to do what we need to do as a city to get an outside opinion. And from that point on, we can make those decisions. But somewhere along the line, something messed up. I don't know if I answered your question. I'm not, I'm not looking to assign blame to anyone right now. The city messed up, someone messed up. And the public did not get the opportunity to effectively and efficiently vote for the people they wanted to make their decisions in their government.
Well, I guess my concern is you're, you're, we have a mayor who says he's responsible. If there were mistakes and the mistakes that were made, they're his responsibility. And I mean, he's, he's owned up to it. I haven't, I haven't heard anything different. And I think we all know there were mistakes made. We heard a list of them tonight and we're asking for changes for the future. Now, if, if you feel, and I kind of get the sense you do, that there might have been a possibility of illegal action taken here or something like that, and I'm getting concerned if there's some, something going on that, that makes you feel like that. Or that, you know, and anyone can ask for an investigation. You could as a private citizen. I'm not sure why we have to have it as the council. This becomes a council issue for the council to request an investigation. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. And can I clarify, I'm not alleging absolutely any illegal activity. That is quite a stretch. I would not suggest something flippantly like that. That's a serious accusation. I'm only relaying what the public has been telling me. We have an agenda item on Monday or at the next protection policy. Maybe I'll look at things a little fresh after Ms. Teske's report and maybe I'll change my mind. But I'm just relaying, Alder and Galvin, what I've been hearing from the public. That's all, accountability.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Alder. All right, seeing no further comments, we're going to move along to announcements. Just press your button if you have an announcement for us. Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. You alluded to it earlier in, in your announcements, but I just want to emphasize the point again. The work of the revolving loan fund committee to reallocate $100,000 of HUD funding for the purpose of the creation of the Small Business Relief Fund. That fund is live right now. I want to thank Wendy Townsend in the Community and Economic Development Department for, for putting the work into that and getting that live. There are two different tiers, five, up to $5,000 for businesses under 20 employees, for businesses 20 to 100 employees, you are allowed to borrow up to $10,000. The first year is deferred. There are some requirements, but it's because of, of the nature of the funding. I am continuing to work with city staff on looking at some other options that we can put before council to consider, but in the meantime, this one is live, it is applicable. We want as many small businesses in our community to know about it. It doesn't do us any good if this funding is not exercised, so please let, let businesses in your respective districts know about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Alder, Alderdorf.
Well, in keeping with your announcement, I do have to say happy birthday to Silas Umendorf, who is six years old today, and he, his wish was to have the best birthday party ever, and he, Mr. Teddy has having a COVID-19 birthday party, but happy birthday, Silas Dorf. Thank you.
Happy birthday, Silas.
Happy birthday, Silas.
Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to tell the District Eight residents, I greatly appreciate them trusting me, once again, to be their vocal passion at Alderman, so thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just want to congratulate all of my fellow council members on their, their elections in the city council. Welcome to Alder Person Gerlach, a welcome, I think you'll do a great job. I also want to thank you all for electing me as council president, although it took a coin flip. I would like to get that coin if I could, just for my own keeping, and then.
It cost you 25 cents.
Lastly, 25 cents, I'd gladly take that. And then, lastly, I want to, you know, thank Alderman Nicholson, Andy Nicholson. He had been a city council member and county board member for 18 years. You know, I think he served the, the city for a very long time, whether anyone has a personal opinion, and I that for 18 years, he worked hard for the constituents in his district. So I just want to thank, thank Alderman Nicholson for his services in the city of Green Bay.
Thanks, Alder. Got to unmute yourself, Alder.
Okay, sorry about that. Thank you, thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to thank Alder Nicholson for his service as well, mimicking what Alder Burnett said. I'd also like to thank the citizens of District 10 for electing me for the fourth time, or fifth time, actually. These citizens are more than just voters and such, they're friends as well, and I look to these people for advice. So, many times there will be tough decisions to make, and they are very helpful in, in guiding me. I don't pretend to know everything, but I, I look forward to working with this council. Congratulations to Alder Burnett and Alderdorf, and I look forward to working with both of you. I know the others, Alders and Alder Gerlach, welcome aboard. So, congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Now, we are on to recognition and awards. We don't have any recognitions or awards tonight. On to appointments. First item here is city officials, so I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made by Alderdorf, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any discussion here? Seeing none. Mayor, I have my light hit. Oh, Alder Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I would actually, and, and, please call me out of order if in fact this is out of order, but I would actually like to move that we hold this. The purpose for this is because I've received sufficient enough feedback from the public to create pause before proceeding. I think, and out of respect for the numerous staff that we have on this particular item, I'd like to, to hold the appointment to properly vet these concerns and allow you, the mayor, to hear and respond before proceeding with reappointment. The other concern that I have, I'm just saying this is part of the process, and certainly I think this is something that should be addressed, but we obviously have a new Alder Person that was first sworn in tonight, really hasn't had the opportunity to meet our department heads, the people that are up for reappointment, and I, you know, and I know that's part of the standard process, but that just seems a little bit odd in any given year, that we potentially have council members that are voting on, on the reappointment of department heads without having the opportunity to, to learn more about them. Given the fact that some, some of these concerns that have been expressed to me are related to performance issues, I do not feel comfortable having that discussion publicly, and because there is not verbiage included on the agenda, I think it would be best to, to hold this. I don't see the sense of urgency and why we couldn't have sort of department heads that continue to operate in their current, in their current status, but allowing us a couple of additional weeks to, again, properly vet out some of the feedback that I've received. So, that, that is a motion, provided it's not out of order, that we hold this until the next meeting.
Thanks, Alder. Attorney Chavez, could you weigh in on that motion?
A motion to hold is not out of order.
Thank you. So we have a motion to hold just the, is it just the city officials' aspect of the appointments?
Correct, and because they're all lumped together, that's, that's why the motion would include, I guess, holding item N1.
Excuse me, I have to push my button, and I have been referred to personally, so I would like to speak when it is the right time.
Go ahead, Alder Gerlach.
I would just like to point out that during the process of running for this office, I did personally meet for at least one hour, and in some cases more, with city attorney, with city clerk, with comptroller. I met with the Director of Parks, Recreation and Forestry. I met with the Director of Public Works, and I met with the Director of Community and Economic Development. I feel perfectly capable of voting.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Weary?
Thank you, I'll second the motion. There was no second, so if we can get that on the table.
Very good. Motion's been made and seconded to N1. Alder Weary?
Thank you. I would agree that if there are some performance issues that need to be discussed, we should have some closed session language here. You know, this is a couple of year appointment, and these are powerful positions. I think we should not take it lightly, and let's hold this up a couple of weeks, we can talk about it as council. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder, Alderdorf.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm, I'm just rather stunned that at the 11th hour, questions are coming up. Something must have just happened. There's been plenty of time for Alders that had concerns to bring those concerns forward, and, and I assume that nothing's been brought forward. I would certainly be against holding this item. I, if there were problems, it should have been discussed, not at a public meeting, but it should have been discussed in a timely manner. So, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Further discussion? We've got Alder Burnett.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I support the motion. It never hurts to have discussions regarding personnel in closed session. If, for whatever reason, the council does not confirm any of these appointments, our discussions about their performances is out there, open, and it may affect that person's ability to land other employment. So I think it is fair to, whether the council agrees or votes down any of these appointments, it's fair to every single one of those persons involved that we have this discussion, you know, in closed session, as long as it's properly noticed. And then the, the second point, I, I guess, to Alderdorf, this, this was published, the agenda was published on a Saturday, so, you know, a little leeway here, we, we had only a few days to, if we did have issues with any of these appointments, to the appropriate people at City Hall, and with City Hall, you know, temporarily shut down, the types of conversations that we would have had may not have been as easy to have due to the coronavirus. So I support the motion. Thank you.
May I respond since my name was brought up?
Alderdorf, go ahead.
I, I just would say that I'm certain that these appointments don't come as a complete surprise, and if there were concerns, one would assume that they would have been talked about long before, the excuse of the agenda just coming out on Saturday, I'm sorry, I just, I don't buy that. We knew who was going to have these jobs, we knew who has had these jobs, and therefore, if there were concerns, they should have been brought up before this.
Wouldn't we know if there were mayor's appointment?
Alder Burnett, would you like to be recognized?
Yeah, I mean, if she shot back that question, I would ask, how would we know if there are mayororal appointment? We can't predict what the mayor is going to propose.
Right, you, you certainly always have the opportunity to contact me. Alderdorf?
The, the issue is, if there were concerns, then they came up during the tenure of the, the last two years, when these people, or the last year at least, when these people were doing their job, and if those concerns weren't worthy of being put forward while they were doing their job, why would we wait until now to suddenly bring this up? It, it just isn't making sense to me right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Steuer.
Thank you, um, let me, let me, thank you, Your Honor. To Alderdorf, just to answer something, I, I've had numerous meetings with the mayor over time, you know, talking about various department heads, so it has been discussed. And concerns too, different concerns that have come up over time. So it's not like it hasn't been discussed, it has been. So, you know, basically, the mayor, I asked if, if these are, you know, who he, who he's looking to move forward, and, and, like Alder Burnett said, you know, sure, it seemed like a slam dunk as far as knowing who was going to be on that list, but like he said, we only had a day or two to vet this or talk about it or think about it. So, the fact that we didn't ask questions, questions have been asked all year, or for two years, so, and concerns that have come up about certain things have come forward. So it's important to know that, and so I, the problem with extending it for a couple of weeks, vet it out in closed session, and nine, nine out of 10 times, it'll work out. So I, I, I don't see the problem. So, I'm, I'm for that as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scannell.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Just a question for Your Honor, I mean, you, this is, your staff you're working with, you're their boss, assuming you put this together, were there, are there, do you have concerns that we should be taking up as a council, that we, do you have concerns, any? How are your feelings on, on this?
Yeah, I mean, I think they're pretty clear based on the slate of, of appointments in front of you. So, I mean, there's always room for improvement on, on my part, on the part of everybody who works at the city, and I would suggest humbly on the part of council members as well. So, yeah, I mean, it's always a process of personal improvement, but I'm very comfortable with, with senior staff who serve the city. I wouldn't be appointing these individuals if I didn't feel that way. Thanks, Alder.
Um, I would just have a quick question, because I am new, and I don't know everything yet. Is it always the case that at the beginning of the term, is this always the time that the staff is reappointed? So this wasn't a surprise to anyone actually at all? Okay, thank you.
Correct. Thanks, Alder. Let's see here. Alder Weary for a second tap?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll piggyback on some of the, the previous comments that, you know, truthfully, the agenda did not come out till Saturday, so you can say you think who's going to get appointed, but you don't, you don't really know. This is the time to weigh in. I don't know how many times people say, well, you had the chance, you confirm appointments. Well, this is the time then that we talk about it, when we confirm appointments. These are important decisions, obviously. Who do we work for? The department heads or the citizens? You know, do we simply rubber stamp things as they come across? Oh, appointments, oh, yep, there we go, appointments, or do we take a little time to vet it? And maybe we'll agree, hey, these are things we can move on with, but it doesn't hurt anything to take a little time and do, address the problems that came up. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. And Alder Gerlach, I, I appreciate the fact that you have obviously proven to be a terrific student and have taken the time to meet with our department heads ahead of time. So I, I just want to be clear that my comments to that are really kind of one of the smallest bits of this, of my request to hold. And I think the fact, again, that we didn't know, I mean, I know that these appointments come before council, I cannot say that I knew it was going to come at this meeting. And so, well, certainly, that was probably the case two years ago, admittedly, this, I've only been through this process once myself. But I think really, again, the purpose of the hold is so that we can properly vet some of this feedback we received. I expect that the mayor would support these individuals, and, and that's why he's put them before us to consider. But I think one of the greatest responsibilities that we have as a council is, is to approve appointments, and not only that of our department heads, but our commissioners and our committees, and, and, and we ought to be having a discussion when, when we do receive feedback from the public. And so that's all I'm asking for. I personally, out of respect and dignity of, of any individual that might be involved in this discussion, that's why I've opted to hold this, because I'm, because I don't think that I want to have a public, open discussion right now on the feedback that I've received. I think that, that would be almost kind of classless, to be honest with you, when it comes to some of the feedback that I've received at this point. And I think we can safely and securely do this with a hold, so that we can, so that we can address the feedback that's been received, and that we can properly take an action from that point. We are not jeopardizing anything as it relates to city operations to hold this. Let's hold this, let's, let's protect everybody that's involved, and let's do this with class.
Thanks, Alder. So we have a motion and a second on the floor to hold item N1. We're going to use the board on this motion.
Okay, hold on one moment, please. Oh, okay, so that motion passes eight to four. Alderdorf, Alder Stevens, Alder Scannell, Alder Gerlach voted no, with Alders Galvin, Johnson, Weary, Burnett, Vanderly, Steuer, Corpus Dax, and LaFave voting yes.
All right, so we are on to item N2. These are appointments of the Public Works Director. Entertained a motion here?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alderdorf to approve these appointments by the Public Works Director. Any discussion here? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it, those appointments have been made. On to N3, appointments by the Community and Economic Development Director?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder LaFave. All in favor, will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. On to N4, on standing.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alderdorf, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it. And five, boards and commissions?
Motion to approve.
Approve.
Motion made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it. Those appointments have been made as well. On to O.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf to approve report O, which is the report of the Redevelopment Authority from the meeting on April 14, 2020. Any items to handle separately here?
Mayor Alder Johnson. I just need to be noted as abstaining on item one, as the developer is a member of my executive committee that oversees my compensation.
Very good. That is noted. Number two will be held separately. Is that all? Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of item two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf. The item was pulled by Alder Weary. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question is either for Director Vaughn or Alder, Alder Person Johnson. I think this is a solid idea. Is $100,000 enough? How is the amount determined? Are we, is there more available? Or I just wanted more on that, please.
Sure, Alder Weary, I can answer that. So we started with $100,000. That is what, what we have available in our revolving loan fund right now. So we can do that immediately. That's not encumbered. We just did find out yesterday, it looks like another applicant who was going to withdraw a loan of $250,000 will not be doing that. So there's potential for that to be allocated into this. I think we're going to kind of see how the next week goes and how fast that money goes out the door. And then come back and potentially put more funds into that as needed. And then potentially some of the block grant money that we'll be receiving, you know, through the CARES Act may also go into it as well. So we're going to start with $100,000, see how fast it goes. But we do have some flexibility about preventing.
Okay, great. Perfect. Excellent idea. Good job.
Thanks, Director Vaughn. Thanks, Alder. Seeing no other requests to speak. Mayor, I have my button on. Alder Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you. Alder Weary, just as an additional response, the funding that we're currently using is federal funding that does come with some restrictions as well, as Dr. Vaughn alluded to. Whereas, one of the things that we have asked of the RDAs to explore, and of course, city staff, is to explore a possibility of other sources of funding. I have publicly talked about the Wisconsin Trust Fund as an option. I don't think it's, I'm not necessarily suggesting that's what we need to do or where we need to go so much as it is to talk about options that perhaps don't come with requirements. And I also sent an email to Dr. Vaughn just recently to at least explore if we have any excess funding in any of our TIDS that might be able to be reallocated for this purpose. I saw that the city of Oshkosh had done that. So really, the purpose of this particular item was to get it back to staff so that they can explore additional funding sources that maybe don't come with the restrictions that our existing fund currently has.
Thanks, Alder. Now, seeing no other requests to speak, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it. The item has been approved. On to P, Report of INS.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf to approve report P, which is the Report of Improvement in Services Committee from the meeting on April 8, 2020. Any items here to be handled separately?
Number four.
Any others? Item four will be handled separately. Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it. Report has been approved with the exception of item four.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Weary to approve. Item was pulled by Alder Scanell. You have the floor.
Yes, I. I put in the communication so that this wasn't on the Sustainability Commission's agenda. So we couldn't get it to INS in time for this year if I hadn't done the communication. But this is something we are dealing with already. We don't need to refer this back. I'd just like to amend this. A period after species and refer could just come right off. The commission is working on that. It's not necessary to refer this.
Okay, so just deleting everything after species?
Yep.
Is the amendment? Amendment has been offered by Alder Scanell. Second, Johnson. Seconded by Alder Johnson. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? Item has been amended.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder Scanell.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Dorf to approve the item. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The item has been amended and approved. On to Report of Protection Policy Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder Stevens.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Scanell to approve report Q, Char, the reports, Report of the Protection Policy Committee from the meeting on April 6. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none. All in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it. The report has been approved. On granting operator licenses.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any names here for which you'd like to be recorded as abstaining?
I have, Mayor, there's one with the same last name. I don't believe I know this person, but I would like to abstain all the same.
Okay. Thank you, Alder. That will be noted. Any others? All right, that abstention has been recorded. Any names under this report you wish to handle separately? Hearing none. All in favor of the report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it. And the report has been approved, noting the abstention. To the Plan Commission.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Scanell to approve report S, which is the Report of the Plan Commission from the meeting on April 13, 2020. Any items here to be handled separately? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor of approving that report will signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it. Report has been approved. On to T. For the Finance Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scanell to approve report T, which is the Report of the Finance Committee from the meeting on April 7, 2020. Any items here to be handled separately?
Number two.
Two. Any others? Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of item two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Steyer to approve the item. Item was pulled by Alder Johnson. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. This was discussed at committee and I did support the direction that the committee chose on this, recognizing, and I just wanted to be able to at least have the opportunity, I guess, to talk about publicly why, why this is just being received and placed in file. It was, Director Ellenbecker had indicated that obviously the city is looking at shortfalls in a number of areas. This particular item had only addressed a shortfall that we would see with, with our action to waive the liquor license fees. I do think, however, that a much broader discussion needs to be paramount. It needs to be something that the city acts upon fairly quickly. I think it's, you know, I think the potential for revenue reductions is fairly precipitous. And in particular, I'm looking at an article that was, that was printed in the Washington Post that talks about how 2,100 US cities are bracing for budget shortfalls due to the coronavirus. Nearly nine out of 10 cities surveyed are signaling that they're going to expect a revenue shortfall, cuts in services, steep declines. And so, and while my understanding is that local governments cannot run deficits, I'm certainly open to Director Ellenbecker or Attorney Chavez correcting that point if in fact it is incorrect. But I do think it is important that this become an item that is a sense of urgency for city staff to address.
Yeah, just before we go to Director Ellenbecker, I totally agree with you, Alder Johnson. And the US Conference of Mayors and the National League of Cities have been lobbying very strenuously to have additional funds sent to all localities across the country. Unfortunately, there was another COVID bill that I think went through the Senate today, is on to the House within the next few days, did not include any aid for state or local government. The hope is that there will be some coming in the future, because you're absolutely right. You know, I think just about every local community, city, county, village, what have you, is going to experience some revenue shortfalls. But Director Ellenbecker, I know you have a bit of information that you could share at this time.
Yes, I'm not sure I have the answer right now about whether or not a city can run a deficit. And I would have to look into that a little bit more before I could answer that to be specific. We did go through and we did reach out to all the department heads to ask, you know, where, what revenues they think they might come in short on. Some people gave me estimates, but we at this point, we also don't know what time, how long this is going to last and how this could affect them. Obviously, we have permits, we have licenses, we have liquor license in which we have reduced fees on. Parking, we have water utility is going to be down on late fees. There's just a handful. There's a lot of different revenue items that are going to be, probably are going to come in short. And it's a little early at this point to tell compared to last year or even compared to budget. We also, of course, are, have increased expenses, as the mayor has also just mentioned and others probably have mentioned. And also, there are various grants and different aids available. We have to just go and try to start applying for these different grants, see what we are eligible for. We don't know how many dollars will be coming in. In some cases, they might be more than our expenses. It might help their, you know, whether or not it'll also help offset some of our shorts in revenues. So I don't mean to not answer some people's questions, but at this point, we don't have a handle on how short we are on revenues. Part of it is how long will this last? If, you know, like Director DeChai had said, also, if baby each doesn't open and they don't open until after Memorial Day, that could be $400,000. It just all depends upon how long this is going to last.
Thank you, Director. Any further comments?
Yes.
Mayor?
Alder Scanell.
Thank you, Your Honor. I see this as a budgetary issue. I appreciate, I mean, it's obvious we're having shortfalls and that's a concern. And we should be trying to do something about it. But I think to be working on our budget this early in the year is kind of a fruitless endeavor. It's an ongoing situation. We don't know where we're going to end up. We don't know what's going to be available us until it's budget time and we have to deal with this. I think anything we do now could just end up being a useless endeavor because it's going to change next day, next week, next month. So I'm not really sure what we would do with this, other than we know we're going to be short. We should try, I'm sure staff is keeping an eye on it. I'm sure they're problem solving as they're going along. And we should definitely be working with our state and federal reps to help us, as they should be helping every city, to meet these shortfalls in these crises that we're in. But other than that, I don't know practically, from a practical standpoint, what we can do until it's budget time, when we have all the information and all our resources and everything all put to us at that time. To work on our budget now just seems a fruitless endeavor to me. I don't know what we would accomplish that whatever we come up with could just be completely put on its head the next day. I appreciate the concern, and it is a concern. But I, from a council standpoint, I don't know what action we can take other than trying to get the attention of our state and federal representatives to hear our, how we're being pinched and they help us. So I'm not sure. Unless there's something I'm missing, I really don't know what others are expecting to accomplish. Thank you.
Alder, Alder LeFave.
Yes, I just wanted to bring up informational. The Brown County Board is looking into the same issue. But they are not just focusing on the liquor licenses. They're looking at all fees that the county assess. And this is something that will be discussed at our next board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. And, yeah, I don't want to suggest that was the only thing that we looked at either, that looked to us to be, you know, one of the most obvious things that we could do to ease the pressure on business, but certainly open to any other ideas that Alders have. Alder Burnett?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do, with all due respect to Alder Scanell, we can't wait till the budget to talk about many of these things because the revenue will be reduced. We're not going to receive as much in revenue in the city that we budgeted for. So therefore, if we don't have a miracle saved from the federal government to the state government, we're going to have to either increase revenue another way, which we did not live before, or max down what we could charge existing property owners this year, or we need to cut expenses. We can't, we can't wait until October, November to figure out how we're going to overcome this storm we're in. We need to have the discussion now. And I have proposed this a few times with the revenue loss that we have. The absolute last thing I would want to do is to lay off city employees or cut health insurance. Trust me, that's like the very absolute worst thing we could do. But we should look at possibly reducing some hours if needed, or maybe not fill positions that are currently posted or delay capital purchases. Why in the world would we wait until October, November to have those discussions? We have to start thinking of these things and voting on these things soon, like within the next council meeting. And that's my, that's my opinion. We're reducing revenue greatly. No fault of our own. We're in crisis right now. Therefore, we have to find ways to cut expenses. Otherwise, we're going to have a huge shortage. We're going to be, we're going to be owing money to the federal government if they allow some loan program. And then, of course, future revenue will have to pay back the loans. So we can have these discussions now. We can't wait. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Scanell for a second time? No? Right, hearing no other requests to speak, all in favor of the motion to receive and place on file, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it. The item has been approved. On to Personnel Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scanell, I think, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax to approve report S, which is the Report of the Personnel Committee from the meeting on April 7, 2020. Any items under this report you wish to handle separately? Hearing none. All in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. The report has been approved. That was report U, by the way. I think I misspoke. On to receive and place on file.
Motion to receive and place on file.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax to receive and place on file municipal court report from March 2020. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it. The report has been received and placed on file. Ordinance is first reading.
End the rules?
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf to suspend the rules. Take up these items with one roll call vote. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it. The rules are suspended.
Motion to advance.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf to advance items one through three to a second and final reading. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it. Item has been advanced. Those items have been advanced to a final reading. On to Committee of the Whole. So we will go... Yeah, we'll, we'll take up item one here and then we're going to, in all likelihood, go to closed for item two.
Move to approve item one.
Again.
Motion made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scanell to approve item one. Discussion here.
Yes, please.
Alder Weary.
Hi. You broke up, but I think you said Alderman Weary.
I did, indeed. Go ahead.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is this where we can ask questions of Chief Litten?
Yes. Yes, you could.
Okay. Chief yourself, still awake?
I am here.
I'm wondering, I've had some people ask about this. I don't think most people know the county is the health department. It's not really us. You know, you see the bigger city. us, you know, we see the bigger cities and they have the Health Department. People are wondering, are we getting information out timely to people about, um, new outbreaks? And sometimes there's a delay, you know, there's an outbreak and they won't really say where it is and then a couple of days later, here's where it is. Is there any way to, to speed that up, um, that you can see? People are craving information and they think it's the city, but it's really, you know, the county.
Yeah, Alder Weary, um, I know that there was some concern about that over the weekend, um, where we had some rapidly increasing numbers. Again, um, the city falls under Brown County Health Department and so they are the lead um, in the emergency operations center here and we fall, kind of fall under their purview. Um, I can tell you that, um, there is a, a report that comes out, um, daily. And I can just, for instance, uh, this morning, as of this morning, we had 303 confirmed cases in Brown County. That was eight o'clock this morning. This afternoon at 4:17, we had 326 cases. And while during this meeting, we've had 40 more cases that have, uh, the results have come back in as being positive. So, um, having said all that, that just means that there are positive tests. It does not mean that at this point, we're overtaxing the hospitals or, um, that those folks are seeking, um, care in ICU or things of that nature. It just means that we're seeing more and more of the tests come back positive. So while I can certainly understand, you know, the issue of wanting to have, you know, information on a, you know, more rapid basis, um, that information does have to come through the Health Department.
Okay, and Chief, I, you know, I appreciate the work you're doing, your, your eyes and your ears and your, our voice there, so if you could just, if you can, push for, you know, as much openness as possible, I think people would appreciate that. Thank you for the work.
Yeah, absolutely. I, you know, just to tell you, we have, you know, we have representatives from the Police Department and the Fire Department, uh, represented in the Emergency Operations Center. We have a live, so we're doing this virtually at this point. We have live links, uh, in the Emergency Operations Center and to Area Command, we have a direct link in with, um, the Health Department. So there are discussions, ongoing discussions, multiple times a day, um, where we are doing a meeting just like we're doing right here, Zoom meeting, uh, in order to exchange information and to give us the ability to, uh, ask questions and to do, do as you just asked, to push, uh, to move things along. So I would, I would just, you know, um, tell you with some confidence that we do that every single day and that we will continue to do so until we get through this.
Thanks, Chief.
Sure.
Thanks, Alder. Thanks, Chief. Any further discussion on the item?
I, I do have a question, Mayor.
Alder Burnett, go ahead.
Yes, on the last paragraph, well, near the last paragraph, it says, "It is further ordered that the period for which regular employees will continue to receive compensation based on their regular rate of pay and benefits despite being unable to work their regularly scheduled hours because of impact of COVID-19 has reduced or eliminated city services is extended until April 24, 2020." That is Friday. Uh, Mayor, is there a plan, um, regarding after the 24th? Have you?
Yeah, I'll go to Director Falls. You can lay out the city's response there.
Yeah, for the, the past month or so, we've been looking at positions and if the positions can have, um, their full schedule, uh, during the COVID-19, uh, situation. And so far, we've done a great job of having people work remotely and they've been able to get in their full schedules. We have less than about five employees that have not been getting in their full schedule, um, every week, and we have, um, plenty of projects for, plenty of projects for them to work on, uh, throughout the city. So we feel pretty confident right now that we would not have to lay off any employees after Friday.
Okay, when, um, heaven forbid, that's something that needs to happen and of course, we never want that, but per the order that we're voting on now, who would make that decision? Is that strictly an executive decision or would that be an action of the City Council? My attorney Chavez.
Are you asking a decision for layoffs? Is that what your question is?
Okay, so this order extends to the 24th, okay? So obviously, we don't want to lay off or, you know, we cut hours unless we absolutely have to, but if that decision is needed, maybe the revenue doesn't, some other issue, who would make the decision to extend this? Is this an action of the council, the mayor through his executive power through the order? Attorney Chavez, is that, you understand the question?
I, I think I probably could answer that unless she wants to join in.
Go ahead, Joe.
So, and correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Chavez, but the, the proclamation from the mayor has to be confirmed or ratified by the council. So, uh, this decision ultimately, ultimately would be made by the common council. So what I envision what would happen is, um, I would work with the, so the Human Resources Department would work with Finance, we'd work with the Law Department, we'd work with the Mayor's Office, we'd look at our budget, look at what kind of decision we would have to make, make a recommendation to the mayor, make that recommendation to the common council, and then we'd go from there. That's, uh, that's how I envision it happening.
So consistent with the order? Go ahead.
The actual determination as to who or which positions would be eliminated, um, or, I'm sorry, would be laid off, uh, partly would be council because of the budget, like you'd identify which positions you feel like aren't as necessary, um, during these times, but the individual positions, that is something that would like, who would be the executive?
And that would only be with enacting this order? That would not be under normal condition?
No, that's under normal conditions. The order, all this does is allow us to continue to fund those positions for this time.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Uh, Alder Weary?
No, not right now, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Alder Vanderleest has emailed me with an interest in speaking. Um, you are not muted on our end, so you can go ahead if you'd like to say something.
Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, we can.
Okay, uh, my battery is low on this phone I got here, but I just wondered if we've enacted, uh, as far as the emergency, he said, we put a freeze on any new hires at this time because of the budget? We, uh, not hiring any new hirers right now? We're moratorium on new hiring? Has that been talked about at all?
Yeah, Director Falls can, can address that as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we haven't put a, a blanket freeze on hiring. I think we, you know, I think for any time, whether there's a pandemic or not, all of our department heads look at positions and whether we need them and what, if they're urgent or not. So all of our department heads have been looking at any open positions and determining if they're necessary at this time. And then if we, we did not put a freeze on internal transfers. So if an individual transferred from one department to another, we typically, we have been allowing that to happen, but then looking at any new hires for vacancies, maybe external hires, we've been closely to determine if we need them at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. All right, we do have a motion and a second on the floor.
I did have a question on, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. When is our next council meeting? Is it May 26th or do we have one before that?
Uh, I don't have that in front of me, but I believe it is much sooner than that. Uh, the 5th?
Is there any, okay, that's right. Is there any reason this just doesn't go through the 5th and not, you know, not another five weeks or?
Right, yeah, I mean, that, that date was chosen because of the extension of the governor's order, um, but, you know, but to amend the proclamation, uh, any way you see fit, uh, it's something I could certainly work with. Uh, but I would, you know, maybe just go to, um, Chief Litten if there are any concerns with that, um, you know, he's really the one, obviously the emergency manager for the city, and he's the one that suggested, um, with the endorsement of Chief Smith as well, that this is something that we needed to extend. So Chief Litten?
Yeah, I would just say with the, uh, the emerging, um, um, positive tests that we're starting to see, uh, in the city, um, we don't know to the extent, um, there, there is some ramped up testing that will be, that will be going, starting in full earnest tomorrow. Um, we certainly don't know the extent of how widespread and, and how many positives we're going to have, and we certainly don't know the demographics of the population that have been, uh, testing positive, meaning those that might be that fall with, within the parameters of being at risk, uh, those over 60 and those with some underlying conditions. We do not have that information at this point, so, um, I, I certainly don't, you know, if you only want to extend until May 5th, I really don't have any issue with that. If we need to extend it again at that point, I think the council could take it up at that point, so I don't necessarily have any argument with that, uh, just knowing that we may have to come, you know, have to address it once again on May, on May 5th.
Okay, thanks, Chief. I, I certainly have no problem with giving the flexibility and power for our chiefs to do what they need to do and protect our employees during this time, but I'm a little hesitant and apologies, Mr. Mayor, but some of the freelancing, you know, the ability free to, to do things is what would trouble me. I asked last time what you might do and, and of course, a lawsuit came out, so that's where my, my concern comes in. Uh, I would make a motion to have it expire May 5th at our next council meeting if we need to move forward again after that and soon again.
Motion's made.
Second.
Seconded by Alder LeFave. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, I think we'll use the, use the board there.
Alder Gerlach, can you please vote?
I'm trying to. For some reason, I have been logged out. I'm trying to log back in.
Can we record your vote?
Do a voice vote? Do a voice vote?
Yes, yes, Alder, we can do a voice vote. Alder Gerlach, you can vote verbally?
I am voting no.
Thank you.
I just put it in.
No problem.
Yes, thank you. So that motion passes seven to five. Alders Dorf, Galvin, Stevens, Scannell, and Gerlach vote no. Alders Johnson, Weary, Burnett, Vanderleest, Steyer, Corpus Dax, and LeFave vote yes.
So the, um, proclamation has been amended. Entertained a motion to approve?
Motion to approve is amended.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf to approve as amended. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, the item has been approved. Now we're on to item two, consideration with possible action on Green Bay Packaging, Inc., manufacturing, personal property assessments appeal. Um, I, we are recommending a, a closed session discussion here.
Will you go into closed session?
Second.
Motion made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scannell. Alder Dorf, can you read the language?
Yes, I will. The council may convene in closed session pursuant to section 19.851G Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel body, governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. The council may, after reconvene in open session pursuant to section 19.852 Wisconsin statutes to report the results of the closed sessions of the agenda.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, so we will use the board here.
Alder Corpus Dax, can you please vote?
Alder Corpus Dax?
No? Okay, so what would you, how would you like to be recorded? Okay, all right, thank you.
Did you get it?
Yes, we, we have it. So, one sec. Okay, so that motion passes, um, 11 to 1 with one abstention.
There's 11 to O with one abstention?
No, 11, 11, it passes 11, right, 11 yes, zero no, one abstention.
Got it. Is that an intentional abstention? Just so we have that recorded properly?
It was me. I, I just really didn't understand exactly what I was voting about, so I decided to abstain.
Yeah, yeah, understandable. All right, um, we are in close. It might take a moment here.
Thank you.
For Ms. Jeffries to move the public members into the waiting room, so just hold tight.
And then, uh, Mayor, uh, we would like to have, um, uh, Director Ellen Becker, Clerk Teskey, Attorney Chavez, who else in the, um, do we need, uh, Director Vonck? Who else needs to be in the closed session from staff?
Defer to Attorney Chavez there.
I believe that's everybody who's.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, we are back in open session.
Move to go back into open session?
Second.
Motion made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scannell to move back into open session. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it, we're back in open session. Entertained a motion.
For staff to proceed as directed.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf to proceed as directed by staff. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it? And then we're on to resolutions.
Motion to suspend the rules?
A second?
Motion made to suspend the rules by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf. Uh, take these items up and one roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it, the rules are suspended.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, I think Alder Corpus Dax, seconding, um, to adopt resolutions one through three. We will use the board.
Okay, those resolutions pass 12, nothing.
Thank you, Ms. Jeffries. On to referral petitions and communications. Any?
I've got one, Mayor.
Alder Stewart, go ahead.
Okay, am I on? All right. All right, this is for protection and policy. To create a Green Bay city resolution to the state of Wisconsin asking Governor Nevers to designate grocery workers as a first, as first responders, thus opening up possible health and financial benefits. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Additional communications?
I, I have.
Alder Corpus Dax?
Um, yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if this should go to protection of policy or parks and rec, but looking into newer, larger signs at parks indicating that dogs must be leashed at parks and or trails and potentially a social media campaign reminding residents that, um, dogs should be leased as well as other, uh, appropriate dog owner ordinances.
Attorney Chavez?
Okay.
Policy.
Policy?
Protect here in policy.
Yeah, we addressed that once before.
Attorney Chavez?
If it's dog leashes, it's going to be protection and policy.
Alder, sorry, would you mind amending yours to instead of grocery retail?
I'd be fine with that.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you. Okay. Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. This one is for Finance Committee to consider and discuss establishing a budget forecast process to position the city to strategically respond to anticipated revenue shortfalls and additional expenses from the impact of COVID-19. Chris, I'll send this text to you. And Diane, I just want to, or Director Ellenbecker, I just want to emphasize that I'm focused on the process.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've actually got several. One for park and rec, that the park and rec department set up a plan to distribute more garbage cans to our city parks. And not just during the summer season, but year round. With the amount of use of the parks, especially now, there's a lot more trash around. And I've had a lot of complaints. There's nowhere to put it. People would like to put it somewhere, but there's nowhere to put it. I have another one for, I believe this is protection and policy, that the city clerk's office have a plan for upcoming elections in August and November, that that plan be committee review by July 15th. So that proper steps can be taken to implement those plans and make sure we have the procedures and employees in place to meet any issues that may come up. Then I have another one for bike, pet, and traffic, that the no parking signs at St. Mary's, former St. Mary's grade school at Irwin and Cass Street be removed since there's no longer a school there. And then for improvement in services, for the sidewalk repair program, that committee look at some alternatives to charging residents for sidewalk repairs and charging interest over the term of the loans that they do offer citizens. I've got some suggestions for that. I'll present it to committee. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Burnett?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have three. And Clerk Teskey, I will email these to you. There are a couple that are long. First one, I believe, would be protection and policy to refund reinspection fees at 2468 West Point. And for the city to appeal to the federal government to allow for the properties shed to remain. And second one would be protection and policy, I believe, for consideration with possible action on Green Bay Common Council to begin meeting a minimum of twice a month effective June 2020. There are too many critical issues requiring attention and action to meet once a month. And then the last one, to improvement in services, to amend and update the stormwater utility ordinance to include and explain the impact trees have on stormwater retention and drainage, and to provide a dollar credit to property owners who have trees planted or growing on their property in order to be consistent and fair with what the majority of the common council passed in November 2019. If the ordinance and equivalent residential unit calculations are not adjusted appropriately, then forestry expenses should no longer be paid for by stormwater utility rates effective January 2021. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any others? All right, entertain a motion to refer all petitions and communications.
Motion to refer.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf, to refer all late petitions and communications to the proper authority. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it. Those petitions and communications have been referred. Adjournment?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Vanderleest. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay, we're adjourned.